Este, el siguiente mensaje será repetido en español. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will hear thirty minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, there will be another and final opportunity for additional public comments. So if you do not get to speak at the beginning, we encourage you to stay to speak at the end. To request to participate in public comment, click on the participants button at the bottom of your screen and select the raise your hand button. When called upon, you will be unmuted. And to comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. When called upon, once again, you will be unmuted. If you want to speak, you should raise your hand now. If you wait to raise your hand until the public comment period starts, you will not get to speak and you will have to wait until the next public comment period. The board president will call on our students first. So if you are a student who wishes to speak tonight, please write student at the end of your name. President Alper will determine, will set tonight's speaking time at one minute per speaker and on an individual basis, has the discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other speech needs. When your time has elapsed, you will see Vice President Brown hold up a sign letting you know you have fifteen seconds left. If you are still speaking, you are allowed to finish your sentence, but please try not to speak beyond your time. Thank you. Voy a proporcionarles un breve resumen detallando el orden de esta reunión. Después de unos procedimientos preliminares, un periodo de media hora será dedicado a comentarios públicos. Al final de la junta habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para quienes desean participar en comentario público y no lo pudieron hacer durante la primera llamada. Para comentar por videoconferencia, haga clic en el botón participantes en la parte de abajo de la pantalla y selección del botón levantar la mano. Al ser llamado, le permitirán hablar. Para participar por teléfono, por favor de levantar su mano al presionar estrella nueve. Una vez más, al ser llamado, le permitirán hablar. Esta noche, el presidente limitará el comentario público a un minuto, pero otorgará tiempo adicional a quienes requieren la traducción o cualquier otra adaptación especial. Si hay estudiantes que desean hablar esta noche, ellos serán elegidos primero, pero por favor indiquen que son estudiantes al escribir estudiante después de su nombre. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chires. Can you please call the roll?
Of course. Director Ana Basudé.
Presente.
Director Laura Babbitt. Student Director Miles Miller.
Here.
Director Zulie Sinai.
Here.
Vice President. Khadija Brown.
Present.
And President Alper.
Present. Thank you. And I'm calling, uh, call the meeting to order. We began at seven oh three P M. Uh, before we report off in closed session, we need to approve the agenda. We weren't able to, um, this was on me, but we weren't able to complete the, um, Board of Education meeting minutes for the meeting tonight. So we're gonna have to pull item twelve point nine and put that on a future, um, agenda. So, um, are there any other, any other requested changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll approve the agenda with the necessary corrections.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Ms. Chires.
Director Basudé. Director Babbitt. Director Babbitt.
Sorry, my internet is unstable right now. Yes.
Student Director Miller.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Vice President Brown. Yes, and President Alper.
Yes. Okay, um, thank you. Uh, we have our agenda. Very, very present. Oh, okay, now, now I'm gonna turn it over to, um, Vice President Brown to report out from closed session. Vice President Brown.
Thank you so much, President Alper. Um, this is the report from closed session. All school brick directors were present. For item three point one point one, the board provided direction. For item three point two point one, the board also provided direction. And for item three point two point two, the board heard an update. This is the report from closed session.
Thank you so much, um, Vice President Brown. All right, I'm gonna, um, say a few words and move into the next, um, part of our agenda, which is, um, a recognition that we're going to do before public comment. But before I do that, it, I will repeat what Ms. Chires said, which is that now is the time to raise your hand if you would like to give public comment. Um, once we start the public comment period, it's too late to raise your hand. If you raise your hand after we've started the public comment period, you can still speak, but you'll, you'll have to speak at the public comment period at the end of the meeting. Also, because we already have, um, a number of public comment, people raising their hand, public comment will be limited to one minute tonight so that we can hear from as many people as possible. So, um, be preparing now to limit your, your comments to one minute so that we can get, um, so that we can hear from everybody. I'm going to, give me one second. So next we have, um, a recognition and I wanna, um, before we get to that, I wanted to just say a few words sort of by way of introduction to this next item. I wanna, oh, welcome everybody who's here. And we have about, um, a hundred and, a hundred and forty people who have tuned in. It's great to have so many people with us tonight and, and at our previous meetings. Um, and I know that you're here for a number of topics. Um, I wanted to acknowledge something that I'm sure we'll discuss. I know we will discuss more tonight, which is that we reached an agreement last night with our teachers' union and also one with the city of Berkeley that have allowed us to develop a timeline to reopen our schools about a year after they were suddenly closed in March of last year. And although we still have a lot of work ahead of us to finalize, um, the, the models for in-person instruction, and you'll hear some of that tonight, and how we address learning loss over the summer and how to ensure the most robust opening possible at all levels in the fall. Those are, there's a lot of work that's ahead of us and it's also taken us a long time to get to this point. And I, and there's a couple of things I wanted to say. One is that the people that we need to thank and appreciate the most are our students, who, as we said in, in the letter that went out to the community last night, they're the ones who've really borne the brunt of the pandemic. Um, and in general, as many people have pointed out, it's young people across the globe who have suffered social isolation, learning loss, mental health trauma and abuse even, in service of protecting older members of their communities who are at greater risk. I know there are not many students probably on this call tonight, this meeting today, but I want to acknowledge them and let them know how excited we are to, to see them back on our school sites soon. Some people have said not to be too self-congratulatory. It's taken too long to get to this point and there's too much more work to do. But I guess I resist that view. There, there's people in our community who have been working sixteen-hour days, eighteen-hour days to keep struggling families afloat, to make distance learning work and to get our schools reopened. And I think that that work needs to be called out and recognized and appreciated. So I really do want to take a moment to thank and appreciate our district staff and leadership, the mayor and the city staff, the teachers and classified staff who, who, all of them and those who make up the leadership of their respective unions, parents and caregivers who have passionately organized and advocated on behalf of families and kids in the district and our superintendent who apparently does not know how to sleep. We, we all appreciate all of you and hope that you can take a moment to celebrate that there's a light at the end of the tunnel. And now moving into our next item. And in the spirit of recognizing the tireless work of members of our community whose devotion to public education inspires us all and is invaluable to our ability to deliver services to the city's families, we're really thrilled tonight to be recognizing the Berkeley Public Schools Fund and passing tonight a resolution to thank the Schools Fund for their unparalleled and really extraordinary efforts to harness community members to support the students served by BUSD during this pandemic. For those who don't know, the Berkeley Public Schools Fund was created in nineteen eighty-three by Berkeley parents and community leaders to address the diminished resources for public school classrooms created by Proposition thirteen. And it's the only nonprofit organization that serves the entire district pre-K to high school. It's funded entirely. It's funded in, whoops. It's lost. It's funded entirely by, by contributions from individuals and businesses in the community. I'm gonna say a few words about the Public Schools Fund and recognize some of their staff who are with us here tonight. We could not have served our community during the pandemic without the Schools Fund. The Schools Fund has harnessed the time and energy of more than a thousand community volunteers during the pandemic to meet the emerging needs of students and families from providing weekly financial assistance payments to struggling families as identified by, by our Office of Family Engagement and Equity. And they continue to do so for a total of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to date to creating the Ed Hub drive-through just a month after the pandemic really hit us in April to address the digital divide, distributing computers and other learning materials and supplies to students and families, serving to date eight thousand eight hundred and fifty students through the Ed Hub to addressing food and, and shelter insecurities in coordination with our Office of Family Engagement and Equity through Task Runner volunteers who pick up and deliver urgently needed meals, groceries, school supplies and technology for students and families and grocery drivers who deliver bags of groceries from meal distribution sites to families in need, to organizing a tech wellness team to reach out to families and ensure that students can access online lessons, to organizing a laptop refurbishment team that converts technology donations from the community to remote learning student resources, organizing a tech support team that continues to help families overcoming technological obstacles, to many, many other initiatives and programs that are described more fully in the resolution that we're gonna pass tonight. We're really pleased to have some of the Schools Fund staff with us here tonight. And I want to take a moment to recognize them. Duffy Ross and Valerie Kratzner have, have taken the lead on harnessing the energy of, of these thousand-plus volunteers over the last year. Duffy completely redesigned the Berkeley Schools Volunteers Program when schools closed that, so that students and teachers can be supported by mentors and volunteers in the online space and to provide direct service to students and families by addressing their unmet needs at home, including assistance with technology and delivery of food and supplies. In addition to so many other hats she wears with the School Fund, Schools Fund, um, at the Ed Hub, Valerie, Valerie Kratzner takes on the Herculean task of managing a COVID-safe drive-through service for families who are able to receive a wide range of supplies and services. And if any of you haven't been to the Ed Hub yet or seen the incredible operation they have there, you really need to check it out. It's, um, it's so impressive. Diane Do connects directly with Ophi, our Office of Family Engagement and Equity, to disburse the weekly financial assistance payments to families that I mentioned earlier. And again, over the last year, Diane's written over three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in checks to families to help them through the financial challenges of COVID, personally connecting with many of them. And Holden Morgan, um, in so many ways, connects the Schools Fund's work to the entire community. I want to thank and appreciate those staff members of the Schools Fund who are here tonight. And then I want to say, um, that periods of crisis have a way of showing us who, who the true leaders are in our community. Erin Rhodes is the Schools Fund's executive director and she's one of those unique individuals. She commandeered the organization's pivot to direct services right at the outset of the COVID-nineteen crisis, coordinating with the district, the city and local stakeholders to get housing resources and emergency assistance that proved most vital for students and families experiencing difficulty during the pandemic. In the face of great uncertainty, Erin has led her organization with vision and clarity, continually identifying new ways in which the Schools Fund can be of greatest service to students, families, teachers and the community, and empowering her team to take swift action to design and implement their ideas. Erin's been bolstered by a forward-thinking board of directors and diverse group of community leaders who serve as thought partners, supporters and advocates for the Schools Fund and its work. We are so grateful to have the Schools Fund as a partner in our work on behalf of students in this district and we're really thrilled to be able to recognize them tonight. Um, it's my honor to ask Erin, if she's with us here, to say a few words on behalf of the Schools Fund. There she is. Erin, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Board President Alper, for your comments and the entire board for this wonderful resolution. Thank you Superintendent Stevens and Associate Superintendent Tiara for your partnership over this past year. I want to especially thank the Office of Family Engagement and Equity who partnered with us to serve the highest and most urgent needs of students and families. We learned so much that has and will change the work of the Schools Fund going forward. Lastly, I want to hold up our Schools Fund team, including our Board of Directors, for their truly superheroic work this last year and to our volunteers, all of them, a true testament to love and action. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Erin. And thank you for being with us tonight. Dr. Stevens, is there anything you wanted to add?
Uh, I'd love to. I'm just gonna keep it brief to Erin and to your entire staff and to all of the volunteers who have just sort of come from all corners of Berkeley to help us through this last year of crisis. I just can't express what a large difference you've made to the experience of educators and family over the course of the year. You know, the pandemic has asked so much from so many and there are just so many times that the district with its structure designed to serve students for in-person education was simply unable to meet the needs of the community as they emerged from the very first day of the pandemic. That included support with housing displacement, food, technology, all of the sort of tasks that made for a better, more livable, more humane experience for our families. And over and over again, you all were there when we expressed a need, when we articulated that we simply couldn't make the stretch. There you were, there the community was, to offer money, to offer assistance. Um, and over and over again, you, you made the difference. So I just, among the many things that make Berkeley a very special place and a really distinguished Berkeley's efforts through this pandemic, I really count you and the entire team, both staff and volunteers, board members, among those who are truly special people who have made a difference to the community in the pandemic. And for that, I'm just very, very appreciative.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much. Now, um, now we're gonna move to the public comment period of the agenda. I'm going to, um, I know that in the audience, you all can't see who has raised your hands, but, but we can. And, um, I'm gonna cut off the, um, the, um, comments at the people who have raised their hand as of right now. And the last person is gonna be Christina Torek. So Christina, you will be the last speaker. If anybody raises their hand after Christina, you'll be able to speak, but it will be in the public comment period at the end of the meeting. And as we said earlier, uh, each person will get one minute to speak and Vice President Brown will give you a fifteen-second warning. So look at her, um, square and then she'll hold up a sign saying when you're done, when your time is up. And if everybody sticks to one minute, we will be able to get through the people who've raised their hand as of now. And if, and if not, we'll, we'll hold some people till the end of the meeting. But I hope that we can get to everybody if everybody sticks to one minute. So with that, um, we will begin. And I will start with, um, MK, who I have learned over the last few months is Mara Kalasis. Mara.
Unmuted. Well, um, I'm glad that I can go by initials. I want to first recognize the work. I know it's been a lot of work to get to this point and it's highly appreciated. I wouldn't get so celebratory, even though we need to celebrate this small victory. I think that we need to do more. We have huge learning loss, incredible disparities and a huge psychological toll. And I would encourage at this point to step up in leadership and bring all the kids full-time in person. It's doable. It comes to a logistical issue. We should do it.
Thank you so much. Matty Tiblum, followed by Caitlin Rosenthal.
Because I thought you said you were gonna go to me.
Mara.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
It's, it's pronounced table.
Caitlin, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Excellent. Um, I, I, I want to join in, uh, recognizing, uh, this milestone. It's, it's, it's a small step. Maybe a huge step. Very important and I want to, uh, I think we do need to take a moment to celebrate it as we look forward. Uh, I want to join Mara and, uh, remind us all that the goal is five days a week, open schools for all students. We have to keep the eyes, our eyes on the ball while celebrating and working for the immediate task at hand for opening soon. We have to keep that goal in mind. This item is number one in the agenda today. I think the board should make a motion to keep it as number one of the agenda on every meeting until the goal is met one hundred percent. It should not come down from that number one place in the agenda. I also would like to ask the superintendent to create a metric to show us where we are standing in meeting that goal now that it become an actionable and quantifiable goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caitlin Rosenthal, followed by Ben Gerhardtstein.
Uh, first, again, I echo the thanks. This is a huge accomplishment and it makes me hopeful that we're gonna have a safe return for our students soon. I have one question and one request for information, both connected to the hybrid plan. The first is about whether it might be possible to get more of the youngest students back in the classroom longer. I look at the numbers for the classroom square footage with the twelve students and no matter how I draw the floor plan and there's no citation for that number, you know, I can fit eighteen to twenty-five students with six-foot spacing in the rooms. And I ask this as someone with a kindergarten or who's gonna have to seek care on alternate days. And this is my plea for information. My understanding is that the city of Berkeley currently allows each child to be in one activity with other children and that school counts as that activity. So that if a child is coming to school, they have to come out of other activities. That means that I can't seek care. And I am gonna do my best to follow that to the letter because I want it to be as safe as possible for everyone. But I need for there to be clarity on what's possible and what's allowed so that kids can be in only one care arrangement and not creating a network of contacts that makes the whole hybrid system unsafe.
Thank you so much. Ben Gerhardtstein, followed by Virginia Browning.
Good evening, School Board. First, I want to say congratulations on, um, this agreement. I only wish that it had been the agreement that we were looking at in October when we had the last opportunity to reopen. So there's some disappointment mixed in here for me because we missed out on several months where we could have conceivably been doing in-person instruction to some degree. Clearly, I think for, from, from my point of view and my family, the second of that two hybrid options is superior. It provides an actual learning experience two days a week. Um, I'm gonna encourage you to move forward with that option. And also echo Matty's, um, point that this agenda item should be the number one agenda item until all, all schools are fully open for, for the board moving forward. Finally, yes, we need more flexibility in terms of the social distancing. Four feet at a minimum that should allow for more elementary school in-person time. Thanks.
Thank you. Virginia Browning, followed by R. Rubin. Ms. Browning.
I'd like to cede my time to Deepmar Lorenz.
Okay, well, each person only gets one minute. So if, if, um, he's, he's on the list already. So would, would you like to give a comment to Ms. Browning?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. R. Rubin, followed by Barbara Andrews.
Hi there. We greatly appreciate all of your hard work in this, but it's true, we need details and we need to do more. Yes, number one agenda item. In your email last night, Superintendent Stevens, you said that you're obliged to employ social distancing, but you're also obliged to open schools when safe. And that time is now. Your legal obligation to provide in-person education supersedes the recommendation of six feet of distance. So we parents insist that you all use three to four feet of distancing consistent with the World Health Organization, the state, the county, the city and other superintendents who have opened because otherwise, schools are not going to open at capacity for five days. Screens are not proven educational tools, but they are proven to be unsafe for our kids. The hybrid model was appropriate during high community transmission and fortunately, that boat has sailed. Our kids deserve five full-time days of school per week and we're not going away until they receive what they're legally entitled to. We are willing to switch teachers. Just let our kids go back to school. The key to reopening depends on your leadership. We want a fact-based and not a fear-based learning model.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Barbara Andrews, followed by Matt Weber.
Good evening, members of the board. I want to thank you very much for looking so seriously at providing housing for employees of the USD. However, I, I have some pause to that statement in that I feel as though you're really not providing the best possible scenario for our employees. Our employees really need to be within, preferably walking distance of the places where they work. Deciding to put them in a five-story building on San Pablo Avenue is really not beneficial for all employees of the district. I really beg you to consider that before making a final decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Matt Weber, followed by Catherine Winarski.
Good, good evening, all. It looks, uh, from tonight's presentation that there is indeed, uh, support and more support for the two times a week, a full-time model. And, uh, I would encourage the, um, the board and the district to build on that. I have questions similar to others and that is, why only twelve students? It seems pretty clearly that you could fit more students, uh, in a classroom, arrange things, uh, so that they could all be there safely. It also looks like seventy-five percent of parents are ready to send their kids back. So simple math would allow all kids to go back to school five days a week if they wanted to now. Do you take the number of kids that are in the class times seventy-five percent? Figure out how much space they need, they fit. Please, 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 work to get the students that want to be in-person, in-person, full-time now. And additionally, I would request that you have a very clear plan for addressing learning loss and what the learning model is gonna be for the fall when kids will have different backgrounds then. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Catherine Winarski, followed by Deepmar Lorenz.
Hi, thank you. I was all, I was so excited, almost giddy last night when I got the email saying that, that, um, there could be two full days of classes for my first grader for starting at the end of March. But I also would like to advocate for five full days for any kid that wants it. But also, I may be wrong, but my understanding right now is that spring break is one week after that potential date, being like the second week in April. And I would like to advocate that spring break be moved up to the last week in March so that our kids do not miss any more in-person time that they, uh, need. It, it just doesn't make sense to me that you would go back for a week and then off for a week again. Just move it up. They're already missing school anyway right now. It doesn't really matter. Uh, it's very valuable to them and the best, enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winarski. Deepmar Lorenz. Deepmar. Deepmar Lorenz.
Okay, well, I think I was muted. Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So I would say yes to workforce housing and I voted for measure all, but this is not the right location. The floor begun in the site selection by focusing on a single site rather than considering distributed allocation through the city. Excluded from the consideration where the West Parkers went, West Campus parking lot, the portion that's not affected by the creek. Also, eleven thirty Oxford was excluded Also, 1130 Oxford was excluded or was not included after it became available after the relocation. The Berkeley Adult School site diminishes K through, K through 12 or K through five future options either to incremental population growth or emergency resilience, as we just saw is dearly needed in the case of the Oxford relocation. This will shortchange future generations of students. Even today, too many schoolyards are littered with portable classrooms. The PDA should be really concerned about that. Facility Director Kalias claimed that what's left of the Berkeley Adult Schools site would still be adequate for K through 12 in the future. But again, this is a pinched shortage, a self-induced shortage that's not necessary. And the massive two-story garage structure that would now have to be built to compensate for the loss of the current Berkeley Adult School parking lot at huge cost would make absolutely no sense in such a future scenario. And speaking of cost, why spend a fortune on a massive concrete garage podium when the funds could be allocated to, to, and used on actual surplus sites that don't compete with education are closer to school, community-integrated and more.
We lost Deepmar. Okay, thank you. Anna Weinstein. Followed by Jonathan Singh.
Thank you. Good evening. Your reopening terms are five months too late, insufficient, illegal, and have caused irreparable harm to our sad, lonely, depressed and anxious students. I'm here to speak for my daughter in high school with her approval. We dispassionately demand that you commit to opening middle and high school fully before the fall as the county allows. Take the actions now, please, to put in place new social distancing guidelines so that middle and high school can fully open five days a week in person before the fall. Tell us now, not this summer, not in September, how are you going to push the county to establish new social distancing guidelines for our middle and high school students? Thank you.
Thank you. I want to apologize that Deepmar got cut off. The, the one minute was up, but I'm sorry that we lost you there or maybe got disconnected. Jonathan Singh followed by Spencer Pritchard.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Jonathan Singh. I called in tonight in support of the, the proposal for workforce housing at the Berkeley Adult School. I urge the board to approve this and, and move forward with an RFQ. I think a centralized site on San Pablo Avenue makes sense because we'll be able to leverage measure O funds and potentially other state and local funds to, to ensure that we get the most amount of housing possible for our hardworking teachers and support staff at the Berkeley School District. According to, to the survey of BUSD staff, only 30% of them actually live in Berkeley. So this more workforce housing anywhere in the city would be, would be a net plus for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Spencer Pritchard followed by Hillary Kilimanick.
What's up? Sad to click on you. What's up, school board? I'm a teacher at Berkeley High School and a co-chair of the African-American Studies Department. This is my fourth year teaching and I currently live in Oakland. I would love to live in Berkeley closer to Berkeley High School. I would love to be able to maybe afford a one-bedroom one day. I live with a bunch of roommates now, so I really support the housing proposal. So just wanted to throw it out there. I also wanted to say I'm excited that we're moving towards reopening. I really miss the students. They really miss me. And I also wanted to add, y'all have a Black Studies apartment. Work with us. We know the situation for Black students was untenable even before. And now we have an opportunity to improve when you come back. So work with us and collaborate so we can all collectively improve school for everyone. Thank you so much.
Mr. Pritchard, thank you so much. Hillary, Hillary Kilimanick followed by Sarah Bowles.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, first I wanted to say thank you and express my appreciation for the work done to get us to the point where we have a target reopening date this spring. It's very encouraging. However, as others have said already, it's still not enough and we have a long way to go. I have two questions. One, is the BUSD readiness dashboard accurate? Are all our sites currently ready to reopen now? It would be good to have a clear answer on that. And two, what is being done to ensure we stay on track to be sure we meet the target reopening dates? I got a little worried with the statement about if we miss a, for a week late. Vaccinations, we open a week late. Seems like with such a late reopening date, it leaves our schools vulnerable to not returning at all this year. Since it's unlikely schools would reopen with just a few weeks left of the year. And then lastly, please address what is being done to enable a full five-day-a-week reopening in the fall for K through 12? World Health Organization specifies that four-foot distancing requirement is safe when masks are worn. Why have we not adopted this?
Thank you. Thank you. Sarah Bowles followed by Katie McKee.
Hi, hi. Under the current hybrid plan, kids will be physically on campus for a little more than a dozen days before school's out. We really need five days a week and we need a plan to deal with all of the trauma and isolation kids have experienced once they get to campus. We also need every school board director to reinstitute public office hours this week. You guys need to be more accessible to the public. You are elected officials. We also need another community meeting before the current three-week gap with the next school board meeting. We need information urgently. We also need weekly, if not daily, updates on any issue that could affect school reopening dates slipping. And just to be really clear here in terms of who's most vulnerable, 12 days of site access over 18 months by the time we get to September doesn't get kids who need free lunch fed. Need a plan to get to 100% of meals delivered to kids who need to eat them.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Katie McKee followed by Jaclyn Erby. Go ahead, Katie. I think you're muted. McKee, I think you're muted. Well, let's come back to Katie McKee. We'll go to Jaclyn Erby. Go ahead, Ms. Erby.
Hi, I have kids in elementary school and I want to first thank you for releasing a schedule to kick kids back in-person school. They're definitely looking forward to being back. I was disappointed to see only hybrid options were presented and I want to see more effort and creativity for getting our kids back five days per week. I understand the distance using a six-foot physical distance for allowable class size, but even using that number based on what's in tonight's presentation, which shows 980 square feet of average classroom size and giving kids a generous two feet of personal space and six feet of distance. So that's an eight-foot bubble per child, 19 kids and a teacher could fit per classroom. So I'm not sure where the 12 kids comes from. But in any case, if classroom configuration is a barrier to getting more kids on campus full-time, we need to see some creativity in using outdoor space, multipurpose rooms, libraries, and other areas to get kids who need to go back five days a week possible. Finally, I'd like to see the district engage a medical consultant, a public health expert panel to provide best practice recommendations for staff and students for safety at school. This would build trust in the community and stop the back and forth on what's best or safest between groups of different priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's try Katie McKee again. Ms. McKee, are you with us? Can you unmute yourself? Okay, still having trouble there. So we'll go to Emily Castelli followed by David Mayer.
Hi there. Thank you for taking my call. I have two issues and the first one I'll just address is the affordable housing of the adult school. I'm fully in support of affordable housing for our teachers. However, as a resident of the area, I'm going to be squeezed between a huge development at North Berkeley Bart Station and now what appears to be a huge development at the adult school with no parking issues addressed whatsoever and a repeal of the zoning of R1 and R2. So I am deeply concerned about that. I would like to know if any other areas are being looked at, such as the Thousand Oaks area or the Hills, like any other neighborhoods besides West Berkeley that can address the situation. And B, return to school 12 days for 18 months is, is, is not enough. I agree with the former caller. We need to have five days. We need to have less of the social distancing per the CDC. And I would like to see more days in school before the end of the school year, and I have middle school and high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. David, I haven't forgotten about you, Katie McKee, but let's go to David Mayer. And then we'll try Katie one more time. Mr. Mayer.
Yep, thank you.
Yep.
I'm David Mayer. I'm with Be Home, which is the Berkeley Housing Opportunities for Missful Employees. And I want to acknowledge and appreciate the members of the board and the facilities people who have been working on this housing issue for the last four years, looking at multiple sites and a number of variabilities, including having to work through this very trying time during COVID. I want to support the board passing the workforce housing to be built on the site of the Berkeley Adult School, recognizing that there are a lot of issues. There continues to be misinformation in the community about consideration and where this plan is. I would like to also ensure that, that in the process of putting out this RFQ that the contractors assign both to help do the building as well as the management, look at the issue of including community members that include members of the neighborhood as well as BAS, as well as the larger community and as well as the labor groups involved. Again, congratulations at getting this point. It's been a long process, but I think we're finally here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayer. Let me try Katie McKee again. Okay. I think we might have to give up on, on you, Katie, but you can always maybe try hanging up and calling back in. Heidi Goldstein followed by Chris LE.
Good evening, Board Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Follinsby. I'm also here to speak in favor of item 14.1, which is the release of the RFP for development of the Berkeley Adult School. I'm speaking for myself, but in my role as a commissioner on the Berkeley Personnel Commission. Finding good talent, competing for good talent in the East Bay is super difficult. We need every advantage we can possibly get with reopening. We know we're going to be doing even more recruiting and staffing and we really want to keep people. And I can't emphasize enough how attractive a possibility this is in terms of workforce housing. Obviously not for all, but for the kinds of high-quality folks that we want to attract, the diversity that we want to attract. It's totally necessary. So very supportive and thank you for considering it.
Thank you so much. Chris LE followed by Lisa Lutzker.
Hi, I live about a block away from the proposed site of the Berkeley Adult School for the workforce housing. I think it would be a great uplift for the neighborhood. I honestly think that the asphalt and chain link fence there is really hostile for the neighborhood. But just looking at some of the numbers in like earlier presentations, I'm shocked to see like 80% of the USD employees can't afford to live or have financial difficulties trying to live in the community they serve. And they end up commuting from faraway cities. So the demand for workforce housing is definitely real. This could also lower carbon intensity of the staff at the USD. And I can't think of a better site than a gigantic parking lot that is just an inefficient use of space than to build much-needed workforce housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Liza Lutzker, sorry, I mispronounced your first name the first time I said it. Ms. Lutzker.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, everybody. I'm Liza Lutzker. I'm a parent of two kids at Sylvia Mendez, soon-to-be Longfellow. I'm also here representing walk-bike Berkeley. I am a Safe Routes to School parent and have done longstanding work in BUSD sustainability planning. I'm urging you tonight to approve item 14.1 to move forward with workforce housing development at the Berkeley Adult School parking lot. Let's not let the perfect be the enemy of a really, really good plan. The data are clear. We're losing our best educators because of the lack of affordable housing in Berkeley. And for those who we don't lose, we're forcing teachers to drive further and further afield to reach our schools. And we're driving up the emissions that already make up 56% of greenhouse gases in Berkeley. That was in 2015. It's worse now as more and more people are commuting. Placing housing in a parking lot, which is currently underutilized at the adult school in the transit-rich flats will allow our educators to walk, bike, or take transit to all but one school in Berkeley under 30 minutes. The only school they couldn't reach in under 30 minutes through walking or biking or bus is Cragmont. Let's move forward with the measure O funding that we have at our disposal and let's welcome our teachers as our neighbors.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Join us, LaMaterie Brown Alpha, by Rudy Suponya, Super, sorry, I'm not sure. Jonas.
Good evening, BUSD community. I am BUSD's Herak Hospital teacher, teaching psychiatric hospitalized adolescents since 2012. And I work in two other BUSD programs, serving families and students. I want to recommend everyone read the Lancet's editorial of February 11, 2021, titled "The COVID-19 Exit Strategy: Why We Need to Aim Low." Epidemiologist and biostatician Dr. Zoe Hyde writes in her study "COVID-19 Children in Schools Overlooked and at Risk." Quote, "We can no longer afford to overlook the role children play in transmission if we hope to contain the virus." "The risk associated with these settings depends on the level of community transmission and must be continuously evaluated." "Schools must not remain open for face-to-face teaching in the setting of substantial community transmission." "In regions where community transmission is low, risk reduction strategies should be implemented in schools as a matter of urgency." Thank you.
Thank you. Rudy, you're next, followed by Heather Chikorn.
Hello. This is actually Val Chipalone. I am Rudy's mom. Rudy is a sophomore at Berkeley High. I, I thank you for your efforts to date. However, they are wholly disappointing and shockingly too little, too late. "The district's current conduct not only violates the district's own policies and state law, but infringes upon students' constitutional right to a free public education. I implore you to open all K through six classrooms to the, fully, fully five days per week as you are now legally obliged to do. I implore you to open grades seven through 12 as fully as is admissible by law as soon as you are legally able to do so. The hybrid model is not the answer and not what the majority of families want. Don't leave Berkeley High students out in the cold. Thank you."
Thank you. Next we have Heather followed by Hannah.
Hi, thank you. I am calling regarding the proposal for the Berkeley Adult School. I am a neighbor, licensed architect, work in general contracting. I've built schools. I've designed and built multifamily housing, so definitely calling from a place of pro-development, pro-workforce housing. I am also a concerned neighbor and part of my concern is because a lot of my other neighbors are concerned and have expressed a lot of dissatisfaction with the process and their involvement in the communication so far. And I think that there's probably some work to do in that department in terms of involving neighborhood input and making sure that people in this area do feel heard. I think that it can be a really productive conversation. We have a lot of designers, architects, people who are pro-housing, pro-workforce housing, and just want to see it done well and have the best possible outcome for our community.
Thank you. Hannah followed by Denise Daphlin.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to say thank you for all the hard work because I knew it has been a lot of hard work to get where we are. And I also want to implore you to stretch, to do more. Because from all the other callers that you're hearing tonight, I'm going to echo three points that you've heard before. But number one, is leadership really needs to vocalize that getting kids back in school for five days a week full-time is the highest priority. We need a plan, a detailed plan of how we get there and we need to get there now, this year, not wait till the fall. I'm concerned that vaccinations will slip, that, that the reopening plan will slip. So my question to you is how do you ensure that those dates don't slip? Two, the six-foot physical Two, the six-foot physical distancing requirement. All of our public health leaders state that a three-to-four-foot distance is acceptable. It is safe. So why are you stuck on six feet? Thirdly, it's time to get into the details. We need a step-by-step of what each classroom can hold, and we need to fill it with the students who want to come back. Thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you. And we have one, two, three, one, two, three, four more speakers in this public comment period. And if you raised your hand but didn't get a chance to speak, you'll get a chance to speak at the end of the meeting. So we have Denise Daphlin next.
Do you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Denise.
Good evening, Superintendent School Board Director and all attending. At the last school board meeting, I learned about the one of your master branch. Guys, several board members noted the importance of sections that concerns funding. Today, BUSD is sharing updated projection of the district's budget and priorities. Ask you to connect dots using an inquiry lens in budget development. I'm worried that designated EAT and monitoring of reclassified English students are tasked currently mostly resourced by a decreasing SCFF supplemental fund. Both services need to be provided. It's not a supplemental service. It is a requirement restated by Superintendent of Public Instruction in December two thousand nineteen. It's a district securing long-term funding for those needs. Also, we all have seen demographic at Sylvia Mendez. Our undisciplined students are not all English learners. We have English-only students who classify as uninitially French students that are low income and questioning. Are we also ensuring that our K eight TWIP programs are fully funded to meet the unique needs of our African-African students?
Thank you, Ms. Daphlin.
Thank you very much.
Denise, you were cutting out a little bit, so if you want to email us your comments, that would be helpful. Sorry, next we have Abigail Starkey followed by NS, and then our last speaker will be Christina Torek. Ms. Starkey. Abigail. Let's come back to Abigail. We'll go to NS. Go ahead, NS. You're muted. NS. Okay, let's go to Christina Torek. Having a run of bad luck here. Christina? There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. I would like to give my time to Deep Mir Lawrence if he is able to, going to be able to speak later.
Everybody only gets one minute. So would you like to speak?
All right. I live in the neighborhood of Berkeley Adult and of North Berkeley Bart, as my neighbor Emily said. We're, we're having issues with the parking in particular for the workforce housing to be established at Berkeley Adult. I'm a retired teacher, so obviously I'm in favor of workforce housing. But as Deep Mar pointed out, there are other locations to put it. And that's what I would recommend. And he also recommends that that parking lot, quote-unquote, be left, you know, for other incidents like Oxford having to move. I went to Oxford in sixth grade. And also, I went to Franklin, the Berkeley Adult, when it was Franklin in kindergarten. Anyway. So those are my ideas. I'm right, right with him.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna try NS one more time. And that will conclude our public comment period. NS, can you hear me?
Hear me?
Yep, now we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I had also wanted to give my time to Deep Mar, but I'm Nancy Saban. I did send you a letter this afternoon that it's regarding the adult school, the workforce housing. We are all in, in favor of workforce housing, but completely agree with Deep Mar's recommendations and feel that you have skimmed over his very, very expert advice. And you have asked the, the company that has put forth the plan that you're trying to go with based on not really properly looking at the other sites. The, I would just really urge you to work with Deep Mar more closely on the other possibilities. Our District One is shouldering so many, and especially our area, shouldering Francisco Street with seventeen low-income housing units on one block. And then the proposed Berkeley Bart housing, and now this proposed monster. And, you know, a very, very expensive garage that is going to give the teachers one-half of a car's worth of parking. So you know that we're going to be very heavily impacted, and you also know that they're going to be driving to their jobs. They're not going to all be going to, to be taking public transportation. So we're going to be terribly impacted. So please work further with Deep Mar. You're rushing this through only because of the Measure O money.
Thank, thanks so much, Ms. Saban. That concludes the, the public comment period. If your hand is up and you didn't get to speak, there will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. We're now going to turn to our union comment period. I know that there's a comment from the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. I don't see any representatives of, hold on one second, Liz. Okay, we'll go with Mr. Meyer, who's the president of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Stevens. I'm Matt Meyer, President of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. I'm very happy to join Dr. Stevens and the members of the school board tonight as we take a huge step together towards reopening our schools. Through hard work and strong alliances between BFT, BUSD, and the city of Berkeley, especially Mayor Aragine, we are able to provide our educators with the safest possible way to return to in-person instruction. Thank you for your commitment to the safety of your staff. Thank you for persevering with us when obstacles arose. Thank you for listening to the voices of your teachers. Soon, we believe Berkeley students will be coming to classrooms, working with their teachers and enjoying precious social contact with their peers. Now, for our part, teachers are ready to start walking the path to reopening. There are still challenges ahead. In a short timeframe, we'll need to continue our conversations around schedules that preserve distance learning for those who will continue to rely on it, while also maximizing the benefits of on-campus time for those who choose to come in person. We'll need to solve as-of-yet unknown staffing challenges and make sure all the state requirements around instructional minutes, synchronous learning, and credentialing are met. We'll need to figure out how to best support our students as they return to a new environment of safety measures and risk reduction protocols. None of this will be easy, but we know we can do it. That's what teachers do. Work together for the benefit of their students. We've been doing it in distance learning and will continue to do it in person. The hard work we do this spring will build a solid foundation for next fall. The hurdles we cross now will show us how to improve. We'll need to reach out to mend some relationships that our students will know that we are all on their side and committed to their success. Our hope is that widespread access to vaccinations will reduce COVID spread to the point where we can be in person five days a week next fall. This pandemic has been and will continue to be extremely hard on our entire community, but some have suffered more than others. Someone need more of our support and our resources in the months to come. We'll work with great dedication to reconnect our students and their families to the care and support they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. I don't believe there's any other, let me just check. I don't believe there's any other union representatives. So next I will ask if there's any committee, committee representatives, which I, I don't think that there are. Oh, oh, yes, there is. Ms. Pastica.
President Alper, do you mind? I do see there's a Frank Hernandez.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Hernandez. Mr. Hernandez is the president of the Berkeley Council of Classified Employees.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. You have five minutes, Mr. Hernandez.
Yeah, so I want to introduce Veronica Husbury. Can you please unmute her? She's our VP.
Sure. Where is she? Why don't you raise your hand, Veronica? There you go. Okay.
She's allowed to talk now. She, I.
Got it.
Veronica, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Veronica Husbury, the BCCE Vice President of Office Technical and Business Services. I am present at this meeting because BCCE opposes the payroll and benefit manager position that the school board will vote on tonight. I want the school board to understand the reasons upon the opposition of creating this new position. In the history, there has always been a payroll supervisor and a risk manager who oversees the benefits department. The payroll department and the benefits department are the two main departments at the district office that service employees. There hasn't been a risk manager in the benefits department for over a year after Kimberly Sanders left that department. Due to the fact that there has been the absence of a risk manager and the vacant payroll supervisor position, both departments have had overwhelming issues with long-term errors, lack of response, timely corrections that have highly affected employees significantly. Therefore, at this time, the district has two departments operating at less than minimal capacity to service employees in an environment where, where we promote, we care, and strive for excellent customer service. This new position will create hardship on two departments that are struggling to maintain excellent customer service. The impact will bring a hardship on the staff working in those two departments, as well as the employees depending on exceptional service. So I pose three questions. First, how can one person manage two heavy departments that is critical to the physical, physical management of the district and employees that it serves and gives responses back in a timely manner regarding issues and settling those issues? Second, how can you operate a district without a risk manager? Third, is there any evidence that surrounding districts have hired one person to oversee two of these departments? If so, which ones? In which it justifies the creation of a new district position for these departments? In closing, these two departments have had major issues that one person cannot resolve, especially during these challenging times. We should be focusing on hiring a payroll supervisor and providing the payroll specialists with clerical support and separately hiring a risk manager to support the district and benefit department. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Okay, am I missing any other district unions or committees? Oh, Ms. Pastica is here from the PNO Committee. Terry.
Am I unmuted?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Terry Pastica. I'm from the Planning and Oversight Committee, which is an advisory body that makes recommendations to the school board on two special tax measures voted in by Berkeley residents. The first is BESEP, which was approved in nineteen eighty-six to supplement the baseline property tax that funds the district, which was significantly impacted by Prop thirteen. BESEP's primary focus is funding class size reduction. It was most recently approved by voters again in two thousand sixteen, and we are in year four of an eight-year measure that generates about an additional thirty-two million dollars per year, or about twenty percent of BUSD's budget. The second tax measure we do oversight with respect to is BARA, which voters approved to supplement educator salaries and to promote recruitment, retention, and hard-to-staff areas. We're in year one of this twelve-year measure. So every school in the district is represented on the piano, and I serve as an alternate for Berkeley High. And this is an overview of our February ninth meeting. So at last week's meeting, we did a general overview of BUSD's budget revenue projections for BESEP and BARA next year and a review of the teacher template, as well as some preliminary thoughts from the BESEP office on how to be responsive to PNO questions about greater oversight. With respect to BUSD's budget overview, the PNO asked questions about where one-time nine-million-dollar revenue funds and other one-time funds are being spent, the trend of declining student enrollment in BUSD, and how that impacts teacher staffing, the state's financial support to public schools, and how they're dealing with the decline in student enrollment in public schools across state, and the district's projection of a seven-percent attendance cliff over several years, which has a direct impact on state funding received, and why BUSD is projecting that so many students are not going to be showing up to BUSD. We then reviewed projections for BESEP and BARA for next year, and specifically how those revenue projections align with how many teachers are going to be needed to be paid for at BESEP funds to hit the reduced class size goals. So the questions in this area circled back largely to student attendance numbers. And what if enrollment declines more than the projections after the teacher template has been set and contracts have already been let? Conversely, what happens if enrollment projections exceed the projections, meaning people move back into BUSD and more teachers are needed after the template is set? We talked about what if state, if state funding is based on average daily attendance and BESEP is based on the baseline tax rate of the measure plus the cost of living increased each year, and there are fewer students in BUSD now, that means there's going to be a higher fund balance in BESEP. And what's the accountability for where those extra funds are going to be spent? Along that line, we also looked at if there's a higher fund balance in BESEP, is there a leeway to hire more teachers to reduce class sizes even further for next year, given the drop-off in student performance that we know is happening in the last year because of distance learning? And then last year, we looked at a draft for how to revise PNO documents in response to questions about increasing information flowing to the PNO with respect to oversight, quantitative outcomes in program areas funded by BESEP and equity outcomes. So the questions in this area looked at wanting clarity in reporting along the lines of very simply, what was supposed to happen last year in your program? Did it happen, and what's going to happen next year? Clarity and program reports summarizing how things changed from the previous year. Request that the reports include general goals and equity goals, looking at delineation of fiscal resources other than BESEP for programs, so we can get a full picture of funding from other school budgets or grants, and the desire for a more focus on data versus a narrative format. And then lastly, in the Good of the Order, we had a conversation about, does the PNO actually have the capacity to affect the decision-making for how BESEP funds are spent versus a routine review of where BESEP funds are spent? So we thank you for the opportunity to provide this recap. The next PNO meeting is February twenty-third at six-thirty online. And as always, any member of the public or we invite any of the board members to attend. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pastica. Okay, now we're going to move on to board member and superintendent comments. Is there a board member who'd like to go first, or do you want me to just call them? People. Director Rossi Dev, how about you?
Calling me first, President. I just wanted to thank all the, you know, the parents and the educators and community members that came out to give public comment today. I really hear both from the educator perspective and from the parent perspective, the need to elaborate on the details for reopening plans, right? And I know that that's something that I, you know, as a parent and a board member, I'm very concerned about too, right? So I think, you know, we hear that loud and clear, and I know that there's more information forthcoming. But I do want to celebrate the, you know, the victory yesterday that we all got last night, that we're moving closer to getting our students in the classroom, right? And the, it's a baby step. It's not where we all want to be, right? Like, we all want, I know that at least for me, that I, I really want to be back at school as much as we can. But I just, I just want to thank everybody that worked really hard on the district side and on the union side to make that happen, and all the time that went into making that happen. But I do agree that, you know, the devils are in, the devil's in the details, right? So how So how are our students getting to school? What will it look like? And I know that other districts have done training videos to make sure that everyone gets activated. So the work that's coming before the district in the next couple of weeks is going to be a lot. And I know that for our educators, onboarding them and onboarding our families will be a lot. But I just really appreciate the community's patience, and, you know, just want you to know that, you know, this is hard to make sure that our students can come back as soon as possible. And they have been the true victims in all of this, and that we're working really hard to make sure that the experience that they have in the classroom is valuable, and we'll work out all those details. I also want to thank the community members that came to speak in support of teacher housing and educator housing. To hear that, you know, only 30% of our teachers live in our city is very concerning to me. And as a transportation planner, I'm pleased that the proposed housing is along the transportation corridor. I look forward to that discussion, to the discussion for Agenda Item 14.1, and also to our discussion on priorities. And I wanted to thank, you know, people that came to the last board meeting to give public comment for our priorities. I'm really looking forward to talking about those with my peers. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rossidov. Who'd like to go next?
I can go next.
Great. Director Miller?
I want to second everything Director Rossidov said. Definitely just a lot of things we need to think about and our goals going forward. I want to comment on two things. First, about student mental health and how we can plan to address that for next year and the end of this year. When we think about returning to school, it's not just, like we heard in public comment, it's not just the learning, it's how are we going to ease our students back into this kind of learning? Because I know for a fact, as a high schooler, going into six periods a day is going to be a lot different than the current learning model we have. We need to figure how students have personally been affected, and what sort of levels of education they can handle, and how we need to balance that with mental health support. And I also want to comment on teacher housing, which I wholeheartedly support. I remember when I was at King, when I went to King, there was this beloved teacher, Stephen Connolly, who was unfortunately forced to leave the district because he cannot afford to live here anymore. And I have so many friends who loved being in his class, and I just want to prevent that from ever happening again in our district. So I support teacher housing as much as I can.
Thanks, Director Miller. How about Director Babett? You ready? We lost you, Director Babett. Maybe we'll go to Director Sinai. Director Babett's having a little internet connectivity issues. Director Sinai?
Thanks. Good evening. Always want to express my sincere appreciation to everybody who comes out and speaks, who waits to the second round to speak, and also just who is here to listen. It's a big commitment to take your Wednesday evening, and I appreciate your time. I want to express my appreciation and my thanks to our BFT partners, our administrators, for coming up with this agreement. And I think it's both a huge step, I'm going to mix my metaphors, but it's also not time to take our foot off the gas pedal. And so we can't relax. It's like the first step, or multiple steps along the way, in that we need to continue to do the best that we can to get our students in in-person learning. And I appreciate that vaccines have become a game changer. And knowing that the potential instability of some of the vaccine, you know, supply, that we need to continue to be vigilant and do everything we can. And I really want to express appreciation to the city for stepping up. We're fortunate to have our own public health department, and our mayor and our city manager have been very supportive. And I know our council members have been very supportive of getting vaccines into the arms of our teachers and our staff. And so I look forward to continuing in those partnerships. And in a recent conversation with some of our council partners, there are so many ways that the city has and can continue to partner with us. And one of the things I think, Director Miller, that, you know, we really want to look at partnering with the city is how we can look at our mental health supports, and what strategies the city of Berkeley with their whole variety of youth programming, including mental health programs, could potentially leverage with our programs, not just in the spring, but over the summer months. And I think that a number of the council members are very interested in talking to us about how we can work together, not just on learning loss, but on socially-emotional support, because all of our students, all of our adults have gone through and are continuing to go through, you know, this earth-shaking pandemic. And we can't forget that it's not just business as usual. And even if we get kids back into the classroom, it's not business as usual. And we need to work with the city to bring those supports forward. So I look forward to continuing partnership. And the last thing I'll say, I'm going to talk about housing when we get to that item. I can't express enough my appreciation for the Berkeley Public Schools Fund. And I want to thank President Alper and Dr. Stevens for putting forward that resolution. I will never forget when I got the call from Erin Rhodes about how do we get support for our unhoused families? And, you know, you want to talk about Pivot. They went from doing teacher grants, you know, and classroom grants, to meeting the needs of our students and our families where they were at in support with OFEE. So, you know, I clapped, but I wanted to be able to say publicly how much I value and support the partnership with the Berkeley Public Schools Fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sinai. Director Babett?
Here, here. Thank you so much, Julie Sinai, because most of what you said is what I would have said. So no need to repeat all of that, but definitely share those same sentiments. I also want to invite all of you to attend a conversation that Council Member Ben Bartlett is hosting tomorrow evening. He's invited me to be the speaker to talk about a school reopening. And it's called "Let's Talk Berkeley Schools: A Conversation on School Reopening." And I will be one of the guests. I would welcome one of our other board members, if you'd like to participate, to join in. And we really just want to talk about the hows. We really want to talk about how do we return to school safely? How can we collaborate? Thank you so much to all of the parents and the organization who have just said, what do you need me to do? Just tell me how I can help, because we are a community. And as the Berkeley Public School Funds has exhibited, we step up to the plate to be our brother's keeper. And so this conversation is just to advance, to advance that collaboration. The tiny URL is tomorrow at 7:00 PM. The tiny URL is tiny.cc backslash Berkeley Schools. And if that's too much for you to remember, just email me, laurbabett@berkeley.net. One B, two Ts, laurbabett@berkeley.net, and I will forward you the invitation. You could also check out our Facebook pages, either Ben Bartlett's or mine, Laura Babett for School Board, so that you can take part in this conversation. And I definitely want to invite our labor partners, our teachers, because we really want to know how we can support you and how we can be there for you, and to actually thank you for coming back to the classroom. Lastly, on February 20th, this is Black History Month, and they are having State of Black Berkeley. There is also a Zoom information for that. It is from 10:30 to 1 o'clock PM. And we know that we need to engage in this as a Berkeley Unified School District Committee, because as we return to schools, we really need to rethink what we've been doing, how we've been doing it. And this is an opportunity in which we can engage once again with the community so that we can really meet the needs of all of our families. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Director Babett. Vice President Brown?
Thank you, President Alper. Good evening, everyone. And tonight, I can say good evening with confidence and with a smile. We are overjoyed by the announcement for our TA to begin reopening schools. And I would like to give a huge appreciation to our superintendent and staff, our union partners, and to the city for helping us get to this point. Your tireless work, long nights, sacrificed week, and you sacrificed weekends to prioritize reaching a tentative agreement to reopen our schools safely. Many of you did this while also supporting and caring for members of your own families during this pandemic. So, so thank you for putting everything on pause to ensure that we reach this moment. To our families, thank you to our parents and our guardians for your advocacy that helped us get to this point. We honestly could not have done it without you all, without all of your emails, without your feedback, and without your responses to our surveys. The reality is that our survey data is missing some of the voices of our neediest learners and our families. And so I would like to take this point to highlight that, to recognize that, and to also encourage all of our community members to be engaged in this process. And finally, although there is more work that needs to be done, especially around scheduling and implementing the safest protocols to reopen schools, we must acknowledge that a step forward, no matter how big or small, is a step in the right direction. And so this is our opportunity as a district to celebrate that we are taking a step in the right direction. I would also like to say thank you to Erin and your staff for making the difference in our communities from March 13th all the way to today. This pandemic has not been easy, but you all showed us that with love and a willingness to serve others, we can continue to make it through this challenging time. I would finally like to announce that I have appointed Khalil Larry Powell to serve as the youngest commissioner for the Berkeley Youth Commission. Commissioner Powell is an excellent student and will be a phenomenal addition to the Berkeley Youth Commission. Congratulations, Commissioner Powell. And I'd like to encourage my other board colleagues to please appoint commissioners to the youth commission. Thank you.
Thank you, President, Vice President Brown, or President Brown if you want. I made comments earlier, so I will not say anymore, and I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thanks very much. I just want to first start by acknowledging the absence of two of our cabinet members, who are typically on the dais this evening. That's Bajie Tiara, who's the Associate Superintendent for Educational Services, who was called away because of a family emergency just a couple of hours ago. And Samantha Tobias Espinoza, who was instrumental in negotiating the agreement around vaccines, is also continuing to recuperate from her own case of COVID-19. And so we wish both of them well, and we'll see them in two weeks. And then I as well just want to echo the words of thanks to so many people who have had a hand in getting us to this really important agreement. Vaccines, I think, do turn out to be the key in beginning to loosen the cogs of the school reopening conversation. And so I would put at the top of that list, the partners at the city of Berkeley. That's both elected officials like Mayor Arigine, Vice Mayor Laurie Droste, and others, who have expressed in public a support for a partnership between the city and the district. I'd also include city staff, including City Manager Dee Ridley-Williams, and the folks in public health, who have also stepped forward to try and prioritize Berkeley Unified's vaccination needs alongside of the justified vaccination needs of other people in this category of Phase 1B. So for all of that, we're very thankful. And then we also must acknowledge the contributions, best thinking of our labor partners. That includes BFT and BCC. We're very appreciative of you and all of your members who make the district what it is, and continue to look forward to constructive and collaborative conversations sprint-style over the next couple of weeks, so that the opening timeline that we're articulating to the public, in fact, turns out to be true. And so in advance, our appreciation for what will continue to be a lot of work in the weeks to come.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. Now I'm going to move to our consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
On the public comment around Item 12.2 with the payroll supervisor and that merging, what would be the next appropriate options we can take to really make sure that we're fully understanding how this job combination will impact our already services that we need to improve?
I'm sorry, go ahead. I cut you off.
Should I ask to pull that item from consent? You know, move forward with the others, or how do we?
I mean, we've already approved the agenda. Dr. Stevens, do you?
Yeah, I can jump in. We're certainly prepared to talk to Item 12.2, which is a combined managerial position for both the payroll and the benefits department. And if it's the will of the board to sever that item from the consent calendar, take it as a separate action so that both Assistant Superintendent Fowlesby and I can address any questions the board has. We're prepared to do that and happy to do so.
I would like to second Director Babett's motion.
Okay. We'll go back, we'll reopen, I guess, the agenda then. So I'll take that as a motion from Director Babett to move Item 12.2 to action. And a second by Director Brown, Vice President Brown. Okay, so let's have a vote on that real quick, on just moving that item out to action. And we'll rule on it, I mean, we'll discuss it and take action separately. So Ms. Chiara, can you call the roll on that motion?
Director Rossidov?
Yes, I agree with moving it to action.
Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
And President Alper?
Yes. Okay, well, now I'd need, now I have a motion to approve against, I've lost my agenda, but the consent counter with those, with Item 12.2, and also, is it 12.9? I lost it, the minutes. Is it 12.9?
I'm moved to approve the consent calendar with the removing of Item 12.2 and the moving of Item 12.9 to action.
12.9 we're pulling altogether, but okay.
12.9 we're pulling. I moved to approve the consent calendar with the pulling of 12.9 and the moving of 12.2 to action.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Ms. Chiara, can you call the roll on that one?
Yes. Director Rossidov?
Yes.
Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
And President Alper?
Yes. Okay. We're going to do that last action, and we'll do it at the end. So next, we're going to move to discussion, which is the school reopening, update on school reopening, which is not an action item, but a discussion item. And I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Stevens.
Thank you very much, President Alper. I'm glad to have an opportunity to both update the Board of Education and the public about what has been sort of an action-filled week, and in fact, just an action-filled 24 hours. So in this relatively brief presentation, I'd like to go over the just recently minted tentative agreement with Berkeley Federation of Teachers about staff vaccination and reopening timelines, talk in some detail about the responses we've received back over the weekend from almost 2,000 elementary families who responded to our survey about hybrid learning designs for the elementary schools. We'll talk a little bit, just in sort of broad strokes, about reopening preparations that the tentative agreement really allows us to begin to implement in full swing, and then touch on some of the key findings that have recently been published by the state of California about school-based transmission and COVID-19. So it is, I think, now well-known news around Berkeley that we were able to enter into a tentative agreement with the Berkeley Federation of Teachers just last night. Two key elements of this agreement have to do with the commitment from the city of Berkeley to begin sort of a systematic effort to vaccinate all of our school employees. Working from strong assurances from city leaders, those vaccinations are scheduled to begin on Monday, February 22nd for a group of employees whose service focuses on pre-K through grade 2. This will include both certificated teachers, classified instructional staff, as well as itinerant staff, school-based staff, and office staff. Moving to March 1st, we then go to grades 3 through 5. And then broadly, the week of March 8th, and as we understand it, March 15th, vaccines for both middle and high school staff. Again, this will include both our certificated teachers, as well as classified support staff and administrative staff. There will, after these three rounds of vaccinations, be a small group, district staff that include district office managers, the Berkeley Adult School, some volunteer staff, construction managers, and others, who we will work with the city to vaccinate at a later date. But the primary sort of motivation here is to be able to vaccinate school-based staff for the purpose of accelerating our reopening activities. A full listing of all of the vaccination groups is in development. In fact, folks are working on this tonight and will be, I think, into the In fact, folks are working on this tonight and will be, I think, into the wee hours so that we can provide both our own staff and city officials with a far more precise or rendering of each of these vaccination groups. The structure of the agreement essentially establishes an if-then statement, if the vaccine schedule that I just presented sort of proceeds according to plan, then we would move on with a reopening timeline into a hybrid model. The first of these reopening dates is scheduled for March twenty-ninth. This would apply in the same sort of staging as the vaccine schedule would apply to pre-K transitional kindergarten, all the way up to grade two. April fifth through ninth is currently scheduled as our spring recess. That's according to a calendar that we passed a year ago. And then we move on April twelfth to sort of a larger reopening, including grades three through five, our middle schools, our ninth grade programming at Berkeley High School, all of Berkeley Technical Academy, BTA, as well as all of Berkeley Independent Studies. And then finally, on April nineteenth, we would reopen grades ten through twelve. As I use the word reopen, I want to sort of strike a note of caution that we continue to be obliged to conform to all of the health guidance that has been issued by the state of California and reinforced in the current orders, both at the county and city level. As much as there are many agencies who are expressing opinions about the ways in which schools could open, including the World Health Organization and CDC, it is actually our local jurisdiction here in the city of Berkeley that has the weight of law and that imposes health orders that we are obliged to conform to. I should say, before we move on, there are a couple of small caveats in all of the opening timeline that I just described. They do include an accelerated reopening timeline if it is true that our staff uses the Pfizer vaccine. We don't know yet which vaccine will be available to our staff, but we've sort of accounted for that. And then we've also sort of accounted for a second vaccination scenario in the formal agreement. There is another important element to the agreement, the tentative agreement with Berkeley Federation of Teachers. And this sort of accounts for the scenario where either there is a disruption in vaccine supply or the vaccination schedule that I just described is incomplete. In that particular scenario, if we arrive at the orange tier, as it's defined by the state of California, both here in the county and the city, then we will proceed with our reopening plans using that same three-week staggered schedule that was described in the vaccination section I just ran through. So in effect, there are sort of two pathways identified in this tentative agreement that will both lead to school reopening. I do want to talk a little bit about physical distancing. I know that it's been concern among many families, and in fact, that note was sounded by several of the comments made earlier in this meeting. On January fourteenth, the State of California, the Department of Public Health issued a consolidated set of guidelines for all schools in California. By and large, those guidelines are adopted at the county level and here in our case, adopted again by the local public health officer. This is, in our case, the City of Berkeley. We do know that the City of Berkeley has replicated verbatim the guidance of the state as it relates to social distancing. I will read aloud the current quote. This is the guidance that we're obliged to conform to. It says that districts are to maximize space between seating and desks, distance teacher and other staff desks at least six feet away from student and other staff desks, distance student chairs at least six feet away from one another, except where six feet of distance is not possible after a good faith effort has been made. Now, I know that good faith effort is a phrase that is open to interpretation. I do, though, interpret that to mean that we must explore options, hybrid learning options, and that the state, and again, as it's codified in our local public health directive, continues to consider social distancing to be an important element of the risk mitigation strategies. I do want to emphasize for folks who are listening that this is not at the discretion of a local school district to adopt some other set of standards. It's not at our discretion to adopt a WHO, World Health Organization recommendation or a CDC recommendation. We are under orders from our local public health agency, and the, this is the current order. Now, I don't want to be overly conservative about this other, there about this particular order. There are many creative ways for us to think about maximizing in-school time for our students. But I do want to articulate very clearly, this is an order under which we labor, and it is not at the discretion of the school board or the superintendent to select the standard by which we employ social distancing in our schools. We have put together this chart, this is a rough estimate, just of sort of social distancing in our classrooms. I think what is most relevant right now is that we have a variety of classroom sizes across our district and that some of our smallest classrooms are, in fact, at Berkeley High School, a building that is older by the standard of many of our other buildings. And that's where we also experience the largest class size. We've started to estimate sort of classroom capacities on the basis of square footage and this sort of six-foot radius that's established by these guidelines and have this rough working estimate of what it might be possible, sort of the capacities that are possible in our classrooms. Now, my commitment to the community and to the board is that we, as we explore our reopening models, that we will think creatively both about staffing and flexible space usage to maximize the amount of time that students can be on campus. But I also feel obliged to be transparent and clear that right now, the guidance is what it is and that it is the obligation of the district to conform to that guidance. There are additional considerations included in the state's consolidated guidance. I list them here very quickly, and that continues to be the obligation of a school district to offer a meaningful distance learning alternative for students who request it through the rest of this year that drives a little bit of the scheduling conversation that we need to have. And then districts are encouraged to implement a thoughtful and phased implementation. And that is to say that over the course of several weeks, that we should ease our way into a school reopening as opposed to attempting to open the entire district in one fell swoop. I'd like to move now to talk about scheduling. Now that we have this sort of tentative agreement about the reopening conditions of our schools, we move into what's naturally going to be sort of logistical and technical work about scheduling. We are not starting this work from whole cloth. We've got lots and lots of time invested in conversations with our labor partners and teachers about what this can and should look like. And increasingly, we have examples from other districts, some including some local districts, about how they're going about conforming to guidelines and also creating in-person learning opportunities. On, over the weekend, starting on Friday, we sent out a schedule, sorry, a survey to all of our elementary families, asking them to comment both on their thinking at the moment about whether or not their children will return to in-person learning and which of two possible models most appeals to families in Berkeley at this moment. Again, we're asking these surveys because it is critical that we build a model that can accommodate families' requests to come back or stay in distance learning. And then it's also important that we're trying to satisfy families' needs about the amount of time on campus. So here are the survey results. These are pulled just today, and so they're relatively recent. We had over nineteen hundred families respond to our survey. The first survey question had to do with families' preferences about what we described as Model One, which in shorthand can be described as distance learning in the morning, in-person learning in the afternoon. We published a tentative schedule about what this might look like, precise hours still pending bargaining. And over on the right, you can see the overall response rate. Sixty-three percent of families said that they would return their children to school if the district adopted this model. And thirty-seven percent said that they would not. Among those folks who said that they would not, about a quarter of the no responses said that they would not return because of health reasons. And about forty percent said that this particular schedule simply would not work for their own family. We also asked families to respond to a second model. Again, in shorthand, we can call this two full days of in-person learning, three full days of distance learning. We put forward this tentative schedule, again, subject to bargaining with our labor partners. In this particular schedule, students would spend the majority of two days learning in something that feels more like a standard school day. After-school activities would also be available, thereby stretching the sort of in-person learning experience out into the late afternoon. And then we were clear, this particular model has an important caveat to it, and that is that this would require that we rebuild class lists, essentially assigning all of our in-person students to our in-person teachers and then regrouping distance learning students and distance learning teachers into brand-new classrooms. In effect, we're starting the school year all over again. So this has some logistical challenges to it, but you can see that by proposing this model, we've improved families' response rate. Seventy-five percent of families say that they would prefer this model, while a quarter say that they would not return into this model. We did ask the folks who responded, no, give us the reason why. Again, we saw that a quarter of those no respondents said that they would not return for health reasons. And about forty percent of the no respondents said that they preferred to remain with their current teacher. And that's been sort of, you know, one thread among the sort of multiple threads of feedback that we've received. So we now know, sort of with all of this survey data, that we must sort of turn again to our labor partners' data in hand and finalize this model. I say finalize because we've had lots of fruitful conversations about possible designs. All of those conversations preceded an agreement about the availability of vaccines, and this, I think, will change the tenor of these discussions about reopening. And they also precede sort of more current data about families' choice-making. And we've seen that overall, families are thinking very differently about returning compared to when we last surveyed our families at the beginning of December. This is not meant to be a comprehensive list of the administrative tasks that are in front of us. This essentially means what you're looking at right now is a list of sort of many of the items which we're representing as complete on our dashboard that now need to be introduced to our full staff. They include a final set of administrative trainings, both for department managers and principals, a family, a final family enrollment survey, which I would anticipate to come out very shortly. They include the distribution of family safety materials, teacher training, site and final site inspections and feedback. Again, all of this sort of work is staged and ready to be launched, but in the absence of an agreement about when we would come back, how we would come back, it simply didn't make sense to sort of put all of these pieces in place. So all of this work will now begin, I think, with the agreement in hand. And then finally, I've listed down at the bottom, these reopening dates, which are part of the tentative agreement with Berkeley Federation of Teachers. And then finally, for families who are sort of wondering where they can, where they can go for a consolidated set of findings about the safety of returning to school, I'd like to point you to the state's sort of new website. This was launched on January fourteenth. It's called the School Reopening Hub, and if you Google that term, it will take you to the website. There you'll find a strong compendium of research findings about transmission in school settings. And among the many findings that the state has published include those that I've listed on the right-hand side of the screen. It describes, especially for younger students, the, that students are getting COVID-19 less frequently and have less severe disease than older individuals. That COVID-19 among children is most frequently contacted from the household. That transmission among students is uncommon, that there's a lower risk of transmission at elementary schools. And then much as we've been talking about, it's the combination of mitigation strategies that include masks, physical distancing, which I described earlier, small, stable groups, hand hygiene, strong ventilation practices, et cetera, that make up the sort of bulk of mitigation sort of strategies in the district. And then you can see as well that the state is pointing to periodic testing of students and staff, both of which we're working on. Staff testing already exists and has been up and running for about two months. And student testing is on its way through a partnership with a new testing vendor. I know lots of folks have sort of pointed to success at the County of Marin. This is not sort of district-level data, but county data. And if you Google Marin County School Reopening, you'll get strong live stats about the number of in-person school days they've offered across there, about a dozen school districts in Marin County. It is notable that many counties, sorry, many districts in Marin County continue to offer a cohort-based style of instruction. And most are moving towards a hybrid style of instruction sometime around mid-March, sort of depending on permissions from local health officers. As we sort of wrap up this evening's presentation, I do sort of want to make a couple of, sort of implore families to keep a few things in mind as we begin to think about returning to campus. So first, please know, as we begin to think about coming back, that all students will be expected to wear masks. That will not be optional. As we talk about returning to school, we will be required to implement a rigorous program of contact tracing, isolation and quarantine procedures that could lead to further disruptions for individual students, classes, or even entire schools. Those protocols are in place now and will be strictly adhered to. And so do expect that even as we open, that transmission in the school setting could lead to disruption. We will be expecting that all families on a daily basis are confirming that their children are free of COVID symptoms and that a student who is sick or has COVID symptoms should not, should not come to school under any circumstances. Visitors to school campuses and classrooms will be strictly prohibited, please know that, except for a few limited volunteer roles in the office of each school. And then I do ask all families to recognize that substitute staffing is likely to be highly limited through this period of reopening and that as teachers become sick, either because of vaccination, transmission, or any other thing that's happening that might impact attendance, that it is probable that we will not have substitute staffing available at the scale of the entire district. We do urge everybody to keep in mind that this pandemic is far from over and that we ask you to think about this next step into hybrid learning being a step towards a full reopening in the fall of 2021. We feel fully committed to the goal of a full return to five days per week in the fall. We recognize that there are dependencies coming from local health officers that may prevent that. But all of our sites are set on August as being a return to five full days for all of our students. And then finally, I have been very touched over the course of these many weeks by the many expressions of patience and kindness and cooperation that we continue to receive from families over all of our grade levels. We recognize that this is a period of anger and frustration. Many of us, staff members, are feeling the same, the very same thing. And yet, for every instance of kindness and patience that we receive, it's further motivation for us to keep at this and do right by our children. So with that, my profound thanks to students, parents and guardians, all of our staff, our labor partners, our partners at the City of Berkeley who have stepped up in a big way this week. We could not do this without any of you, and we realize that it really is our sort of privilege to be able to serve the Berkeley community. So with that, President Alper, I stop my presentation and welcome our discussion.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Stevens. This item is up here for discussion. And a big part of it was to provide that information to the community, but I want to see if there's comments or questions that my colleagues have. Director Vasilev.
Hi, thank you, Superintendent Stevens, for that presentation, and I just want to thank you and my board colleagues and also the staff for really, you know, putting, putting a lot of thought very quickly into how we're going to implement our return to schools. My, just a kind of high-level takeaways or comments that I'd like to share is that when we, I know that there's a lot of logistics and you kind of just gave us, you know, really like, you know, the framework of what you're thinking is thus far, but I want to make sure, because there's a lot of logistics that need to happen, what, you know, for the experience of returning to school, both for our families and for our educators. But in addition to the videos, which I think are great, you know, I've spoken to you privately about this, but I'm a big fan of the training videos, that we also have some kind of, you know, culturally responsive town hall, and particularly in Spanish, because I think there's a lot of fear right now in the Latinx community with a lot of parents being essential workers of what it means to send their children to school, right? Like, there's some legitimate fears. There's parents' livelihoods at stake. There's high schoolers that are taking care of their siblings, you know, that have really stepped up during the pandemic because their parents are both essential workers and they're out of the house. And so, and I've spoken to some of these students, and so I think it's really important that we have, you know, a very open town hall whenever these logistics are in place in Spanish, so that families can understand what is the process going to look like, right? I also wanted to make sure that the information that went out through our OFE staff to all of our families, right? We had translations both in Spanish and in Arabic. I think that's really important, too, because there's so many little logistical details that parents will have to understand. And that goes back to a lot of the conversations that we're having at the beginning of the pandemic, of how to make sure that our tech support is culturally responsive. And so, you know, these needs will come up again. We're using new apps. We're using new apps to check, to make sure that students are checking in. How do you use your apps? What do you download? Like, you know, how does that look like? So making sure that that kind of, you know, tech support is really culturally responsive. And I also wanted to ask you about transportation. And I don't know if you're, if you're comfortable having that discussion, but I, I understand, it is my understanding, and you can help me confirm this, that in the, in the survey data, that there was only a minority of families that requested transportation support. Is that correct?
That's correct. Among the respondents, eight percent said that they would need transportation.
And for those eight percent, for that eight percent of students, right? And we don't know, we don't have the breakdown on how many students of that eight percent are students with IEPs that will legally be required to have transportation and how many are not, right? So I think because of our assignment systems, particularly, you know, for, for families that have really depended like on, on the school bus, right? What will that experience look like? And maybe you can, I don't know if you're ready to answer some questions, like what's the capacity for different buses right now? And how is that going to change?
We are, and Assistant Superintendent Follinsby also supervises transportation. So I'll welcome her to jump in this, down to this. I know that she's got these facts down handy as well. So, so, you know, during normal times, we typically transport just over a thousand elementary-age students. That's as part of our special education busing, but that's also part of our enrollment zones. When we, we've done some sort of detailed analyses of what it would look like to implement social distancing on buses, which it continues to be a requirement. And we think that we're down to about fifteen, maybe twenty percent of that capacity, which gives us sort of a daily ridership or for each run, I should say, of the buses, about two hundred students. It may be the case, in fact, that that eight percent of our families who are saying that they need a bus ride could get it even with social distancing. I think we're sort of in the ballpark. And of course, the, you know, understanding exactly what family need will look like will, will help us answer that question in more detail. But I think we're approximately fairly close to being able to meet family demand for bus rides even with social distancing.
Correct. Yeah.
I can provide a little bit more information as well. I meet regularly with Sheila Collier, our transportation manager. And we look at the capacity of our buses, how many are actually working right now. And with social distancing, we're thinking about fourteen students on the larger buses and about four students on the smaller buses. That brings our capacity to about a hundred and fifty. And that's because some of our buses are not in operation. So, but with the current fleet, we're looking at one fifty. And with, with all our buses working, that will go up like probably to two hundred and fifty.
Thank you. I'm going to put in, and I'm sorry, Vice President Brown, I just wanted to say this really quickly. In the chat, I'm going to put in information about the, the Free Transit Pass Program for our middle schoolers and high schoolers. Because I think it's really important that it, as there's, you know, capacity limitations on transit, on our transportation system, that families know that there is this resource that the county is providing right now.
Director Vassadov, the chat's not public, so. Yeah, I'm asking you not to do that, because anything you share during the board meeting should be public. So, but if you provide it to staff, I'm sure staff can make it.
That's exactly right. I know that we've sent that information out to our middle and high school students again. We'd be happy to send it again.
That would be great. Thank you.
While on that point, though, just to clarify, we don't provide transportation for middle and high with our buses, right?
We do not, with the exception of students who have transportation written into their individual education plans.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that was understood.
Thank you, Director Babett. Okay, Vice President Brown.
Thank you, Director Vassadov, for bringing up the point about transportation. And thank you to Director Babett for the clarification. I wanted, in terms of thinking about transportation, especially from the perspective of the survey data, I also want to take this time to highlight what I mentioned earlier, that our survey data doesn't reflect the needs of, of all of our families. And so whereas now we see that there is only a small percentage of families that need survey data or need transportation, the reality is that our students who really rely on transportation are not, those families are not, are not reflective in the survey as much as our other families are. So Superintendent Stevens, if you could take a second to, to address that and address that our needs may potentially be greater than, than what we see reflected in our survey.
Yeah, I appreciate the question, Director Brown. So, you know, among the, so we had nineteen hundred families respond to the survey. And we did experience sort of under-representation among really key demographic groups. About fifty percent of the respondents were white, identified as white. We only had four percent of our respondents identify as African-American. And about six percent of our respondents identify as Latinx. And that compares to a district-wide population of about eight percent African-American and about twenty-five percent Latinx. So, so we know that we've undersampled. And we know that this data, while it's really helpful, isn't likely reflective of the full set of needs that families are experiencing. If I had to guess, there's probably a set of families who didn't respond to the survey who may approach school reopening somewhat more cautiously than the folks who responded to the survey.
Director Sinead, I have another question.
Thank you for the presentation and again for all the work that everybody has done to get here. I have one comment and a question and kind of along the same arena as the transportation. I also want to highlight the need for us to make sure that our food service program is up and running and ready. And, you know, the ongoing challenge of food insecurity among many of our families. And I just want to draw, I know I emailed you, Dr. Stevens, but I want to draw public attention to Oakland Unified, which has just launched an initiative to actually deliver meals to students' homes and hiring parents and guardians who have been recently laid off. I would love to learn more about how they're doing that and what resources they're using to do that. Because even with, you know, families coming on-site, partial days, full days, there's still, you know, potentially a third to half who are remaining home. And I'm very concerned that we've got access to food and need to figure out a way to get it into our students' tummies. So just flag that. And then could you talk, there was a lot of public comment around the desire to get back to five days a week as soon as possible. Could you talk a little bit about what the opportunities and/or challenges are in reaching that, that goal?
Yeah, why don't I start with the opportunities? I think I just described the challenge in the presentation, you know, that we are obliged to work with that, that sort of standard of six feet. You could see in the way that that guidance is written, that after a good faith effort, that something less than six feet could be permissible. On the opportunity side, you know, what I see is that we have interesting conversations in front of us about the creative use of classroom space to maximize the number of students who can be in a classroom at a single time. We also have interesting conversations ahead of us about the creative use of alternative space on our school campuses. So that even if a class, let's say, consisted of sixteen students, four of them potentially could be in a swing space. And that there could be rotations in order to create more time on campus. And then we also have to think flexibly about staff. Every time that we create a small group or a swing, swing group, we have to make sure that we have adequate supervision. But I think that it's both in creative thinking about classroom setup, creative use of alternative space and creative use of staffing. That's where I think the sort of interesting combinations come about that help us expand potentially beyond the, the hybrid model that we just described. But I am sort of striking a bit of a conservative tone. I don't want to over-promise our ability to deliver five full days of instruction at this point. But I do want to say that it is a goal. And that as we move into this sort of quick sprint of scheduling, that we're going to hold in mind the desire among so many of our families to have as many days on campus as possible for their children.
I'll go to Director Miller and then I'll ask my question.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Dr. Stevens, for that presentation. I, yeah, I'm just saying, my first reaction, I saw that eight percent from the survey, I was like, there's no way that is actual, like, there is just no way. So it's good. Well, not good, but it's like clear to hear the makeup of who responded to that survey. Looking at the schedule for when you're planning to release preparation materials, like specifically trains for teachers, and then like releasing, I guess, videos for parents about what going back to school could look like. I would just like to add that prep for high school student-run activities would be necessary, such as like, whether it be just like a document describing like what would be allowed and what wouldn't be allowed, and how student leaders can start now preparing for a possible cohorted transition, just because they need that time as well. And I think if we get to April nineteenth for BHS students and we just say, okay, you can go back and cohorts and clubs do not have the proper preparation to do so, they just won't be ready and it'll be so much more beholden. So just keep in mind while you're preparing those materials to have student materials available as well.
That's great. And I would welcome the chance to work with you, Director Miller, on that, so that we're just effective in getting the word out to our student organizations.
This, this, I have a question that's, that's kind of similar to something that Director Vassadov asked. In addition to just getting out information to all of our families about the different options, because they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to make a choice pretty soon. Whatever the hybrid, whatever the hybrid model is, they're gonna have to choose whether to do it or have their kids stay at home. And, and if we, do we know from what other districts that are a little ahead of us have done, how they've managed to reach everybody and what they've done if people aren't responsive? It's, it's a short amount of time that we're gonna have to get answers from everybody and then plan around it because the numbers will really dictate the staffing in so many ways. And we'll, and it's, and it's so much harder to reach families now. People are more dispersed than they were before the pandemic. So can you just say a little bit about your thoughts about reaching people to make that, to actually make that choice?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. So, so it will be true, you know, coming soon. And I imagine this is probably in the matter of two weeks or so, that we'll need to ask all of our families to make a decision about their return to campus. And I doubt very much that at this point, we would be able to sort of entertain flexible decision-making. I sort of imagine a point at time in which families will just need to decide for the remainder of the year whether or not they will come back or remain with distance learning. At that point, I no longer see it's viable for the district to try and centrally manage communication. But rather that we would be taking advantage of all of our school-based communication platforms, tools like Remind, Seesaw, Google Classroom, our learning management system. These, I think, are far more effective communication tools for families on a day-to-day basis. And we didn't use them, you know, we use sort of a central email blast along with our website for this particular survey. And when it comes to sort of a final enrollment decision, I think that will change our strategy and really work through teachers and through our OFE liaisons. And in effect, sort of task our schools to make sure that we're getting a hundred percent response rate back from our families.
Great. Yeah, that makes sense. That's helpful. Thank you. Are there, are there any other comments or questions, or Director Babett? And then, and then we'll move on to the setup.
Yes, thank you so much. I just wanted to add that in support of all the public comment, that as much as we can move towards as many on-campus hours as possible, that's the direction we definitely want to move towards. And then, you know, that's really the big reason why we pushed for vaccinations and part of why our city partnered with us in that committee, so that we could maximize in-person instruction. So definitely want to keep that as the forefront and the goal. And then to say that FEMA, just to remind everyone, has come through the Oakland Coliseum site. They are trying to get six thousand people vaccinated a day, seven days a week. So just please, everyone, sign up for all the lists. Like, get on every list possible and they will call your name sooner than you think. Because we really do want to create community immunity in our schools, in our city, for our families. And then also just to encourage people, we're talking about vaccinations, to really reach out to elders, to really reach out to people who may not be as tech-savvy and bring someone else along to make sure that they also have the appointments that they need, the transportation they need to get there. Let's work together on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Director Babett. All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Stevens and, and everyone. And I'm gonna move us along.
And President Alper, do you mind if I just add one small comment?
Please.
And, and that is, so one small detail, I didn't have it at my fingertips, but just want to share in terms of food delivery. We had honored the Schools Fund just a little earlier in this meeting. Turns out they do that, too. Through our OFE liaisons, they're also able to arrange task runners to do food delivery to our families. And so that is taking place through the Schools Fund, one more amazing thing that they do for all of us.
Can I just add one more point? Sorry. When we're talking about the Schools Fund, Dr. Stevens, thank you for bringing that. We also have to thank OFE for all of the ways that they have made, made things accessible for our students during distance learning. And they need all of the congratulations that we can give them. So thank you to OFE.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Brown. Next, we'll move on to item thirteen point two, which is the, and just for, for anybody who's, we still have over a hundred people watching. We're gonna have an update and discussion of budget priorities. And then we will move to our one action item, which is the staff recommendation of the Berkeley Adult School Parking Lot as a location for BUSD workforce housing. So we will get to that item in, in about half an hour or less. All right, Dr. Stevens, turn over to you for item thirteen point two.
Great. Thank you very much. I'll be co-presenting, in fact, the main presenter this evening is our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Pauline Follinsby. I'll be providing the occasional assist sort of along the road. What we hope to do is just provide the board with a brief update about a couple of sort of budget developments since our last budget presentation last two weeks ago. And then the sort of main feature of tonight's presentation is a discussion of high-level priorities, sort of ideas that we want to keep in mind as we build this year's budget, so that we're able to sort of pursue the board's priorities. So with that, Assistant Superintendent Follinsby, would you like me to share? And I'll sort of drive the screen. Does that make sense?
Thank you. Yeah.
Here we go.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna just let, let you do the, the driving right now.
Okay, thanks. So, good evening, everyone. We will be looking at two significant budget updates very briefly. And then we're gonna take a deeper look at our budget priorities. So in terms of the budget updates on the next slide. This is a timeline in terms of our budget calendar, presented a little differently just in terms of the impact on the unrestricted general fund and BSEP, their requirements from now until the budget's actually approved in June. And then our LCAP. This actually is just, the board has already approved the budget calendar. This is looking at it in a, in a different manner, including the fact that we had a town hall in January, January twenty-seventh. And then in, in terms of LCAP, the impact for our PAC or D-LAC and our E-LAC and our principals. So we're identifying our partners and the process. And we just brought this back just to ensure that we're all on the same page. So we're now in February. So we're looking at priorities for the unrestricted general fund. And BSEP will also be sharing our school budgets, our budgets with our, with our principals and schools for the unrestricted general fund, Title I, BSEP, and the general fund. That should be going out tomorrow, actually. So we're working on that. So we can go to the next.
Just to quickly point out, there is an informational item for members of the public that elaborates on the LCAP budget development and plan development process. That's included in the board materials for this evening.
Okay. Thank you. So this is an update, an, an update to the revenue projections for LCAP. And we need to go back to the, so the impact on the, on our unduplicated student count. We looked at that at the last meeting. And as a result, it's gonna obviously impact our supplemental funding. And then we also identified shortfalls in our LCAP project, LCAP program. L L cap program. So we'll be looking at the next slide. We can look at the details in terms of. Um, the unduplicated student count, we're bringing that back again. Um, the trend that we're seeing in twenty-one, twenty-two, which is impacting our funding. Is part of a steady decline that we've been seeing since thirteen fourteen. So this is a slide that looks at the impact of our unduplicated student counts. In twenty-twenty-one, um, we saw the decline of a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Um, in twenty-one, twenty-two, there's a further decline as a result um of. The reduction in unduplicated students, three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. We also have funding um in our L cap program that's currently funded by one-time funds. So we're now looking at a shortfall of almost eight hundred thousand dollars between. Our anticipated revenue and expenses for our L cap program. And on the next slide, we we um we actually um looked at multi-year projections. In the format that we usually share with the board. So on the next slide, um, you will see um the format that. Um, this is the format that we actually present usually at interims or when we're doing different scenarios. Um, this is our best thinking at this time. And obviously, as um as our assumptions change, we'll be updating the multi-year projections. So um, I shared this actually with the um with SBAC last night. And what's different in the in the top section, we're usually looking at gap funding. Well, now we're at a hundred percent gap funding, so we don't even include that um in this section. But looking at our cola, um, in our last presentation, we know um that our cola for twenty-one, twenty-two is a set. Uh, both the Department of Finance and um School Services, they agree that three point eight four is a good percentage. So in terms. Of just planning for our budget for twenty-one, twenty-two, we're all in agreement with that, which um with that um cola. But for twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four, this was a district's best thinking, our staff's best thinking in terms of a blended cola. Um, our our loss in ADA and our projection for UPP. These are very. Three very important factors when looking at our um, our um LCFF funding, both for base and supplemental. So um our total LCFF funding, ninety-five point nine for twenty-one, twenty-two, it dips to twenty-nine to one point four. In twenty-two, twenty-three and ninety-three point five with the assumptions that we mentioned. And you can see the decline in supplemental funding um for what we call the cliff in ADA. Um, uh, I mean, I won't um spend a lot of time on that, but um. As a result of um us having to recognize the prior year's loss in twenty-two, twenty-three. You can see that we're um experiencing a significant decline in supplemental funding. In twenty-two, twenty-three, which is slightly in improved in twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, overall, our revenue is a hundred point five in twenty-one, twenty-two, ninety-six. In twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four, ninety-eight point one. Um, on the next slide, I'm not gonna focus, I'm gonna focus on the change in fund balance. Um, we looked at our expenditures. Um, we looked at our contributions in and out contributions to BSEP. Contributions to special aid or contributions in from BSEP. And what we're looking at to balance our budget um in twenty-two, twenty-three. We're looking at possible um budget adjustments. I'm not saying budget um reductions. It could be increased revenue. It could be transfer of um, transfer of costs, other funding sources that are appropriate. So we're looking at a six point five adjustment um in. In um twenty-two, twenty-three, which will be ongoing, and an additional adjustment one time. Um, in twenty-two, twenty-three of nine of two point five. So that's a nine million dollar shortfall. And when you look at the impact of us losing revenue um for ADA or increased costs. Um, and that increase is predominantly our person stars. Nine million dollars is about where we projected we would end up. So again, this is not the year that we're focusing on. But this is obviously something we have to take into account as we build our budget for twenty-one, twenty-two and the two subsequent years. Um, you can see we're still deficit spending in all three years, even with the um budget adjustments. Um, but we are projecting an ending fund balance, a positive ending fund balance um of point nine. Um, and point eight and point three for the three um. Calendar years when we are looking at constructing the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. So um next slide. Um, this is it. This is one um shining star on the horizon. We are getting this expanded learning time grant. It's one-time revenue in twenty-one, twenty-two, but it's a significant um amount of funding. It's six point six million dollars. It's made up of um our hope, our funding for homeless youth, two twenty-one homeless youth. As well as our share um for um based on our LCFF. So six point six million dollars, it's um part of Governor Newsom's um budget. And this will actually um be providing targeted academic intervention. Um, with priority for our vulnerable students. So as we're constructing our budget, we have to take into account that we do have this one-time funding source. And of course, we should be using it for one-time expenditures. But um this was not presented when we looked at the governance budget, when I brought that to the board earlier. Um, next slide. So this slide um should look familiar. Um, we're bringing it back again. Um, the we looked at the. Um, this is just for twenty-one, twenty-two. We are getting increased revenue. Um, as we mentioned in the general fund, L cap, we saw a reduction. BSEP is actually. Um, having an increase of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, when we look at cost increases in twenty-one, twenty-two, as we mentioned. Um, before the two point eight million dollars, we probably will only have about point five million dollars in ongoing revenue. But we are looking at uh one time, um, nine million dollars, the six million dollars that possibly could be used for um. For expanded learning loss. And then, of course, we're getting um three million additional um COVID. Um, funding um for S R two, um, which we just gotten some more information on and we'll bring it to the board. Um, BSEP, on the other hand, um, they have available a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in new funding. And then they're having, they're using their measure A, uh, one-time revenue of a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. And of course, with L cap, um, we're looking at that deficit that we mentioned earlier, the seven hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. So with that, um, we can go to the next slide.
How many more? Oh, okay.
Okay, and then um I think I'll um at that point, if there are no questions. We can start to look at high-level priorities that um Dr. Stevens would um take us um, lead us through that discussion.
Okay, well, let let's ask, um, we we've allocated thirty minutes for this for this item and and I want to make sure we. Have sufficient time for to discuss the workforce housing issue. So let's, let me stop there and ask if there's questions for. Assistant Superintendent Follinsby, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Stevens for a relatively brief conversation, initial conversation about priorities. Director Sinai.
Um, thanks. I have um a a referral and a couple of quick quick questions. So one is, I'd like to refer Denise Daphlon's comment during public comment about. The reclassification of ELD students and the support for them. And where that fits when within the supplemental as that's declining. And that's, you know, her her email talks about. That we're required to support students through that reclassification process of just where that's fitting. So I don't want to answer it now. I just. Want to ask that you check out her email and see whether that's something that needs to go to S P A C. The Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee or the Joint uh D lack PAC meeting. So just to make sure that we don't lose that. Uh, and then a couple of quick questions. Does the unduplicated count get validated every year? Is that something that we have to submit every year?
Yes, it's back of our cow pads reporting.
Okay, so if if. For some reason, we have more people who are unemployed or who are in falling in the categories. Of the unduplicated, we'll have time in the fall to basically recalibrate that number.
Yes.
And then that for the expanded learning money, the six million plus. Can that that does that, um, is that not available until July first of the fiscal year? So we couldn't use it in June, say, for summer programming, or does it, is it July first start date?
Um, we're still waiting for additional detail. Um, it hasn't been unpacked, but I suspect it's gonna be available July one. Um, they may um do the same thing they did with COVID where we can have expenses. That will be covered by the grant, so we can um have expenses ahead of the grant. But when we get additional information um from the state, um, we can determine how and when we can spend that money.
All right, um, Director Vassad.
Well, Julie just asked my question about the grants. And uh, Julie, you brought up both of my points. The other one was definitely to look at um how we can continue to support our defined number of English language learners.
Vice President Brown.
Thank you, um Associate Superintendent Follinsby for your um, for your presentation. I always, I always enjoy learning all all of the important numbers from you. Um, I do have a question. Um, about, I have a couple of questions. So the first is um just about the alarming. Um, deduction of eighty-five students, or reduction, rather, of eighty-five stu- of eighty-five unduplicated students. Um, I just want to paint paint the picture, probably get some assistance to understand it a little bit better. Um. Is it that these students have been reclassified, or is it that we've lost these eighty-five students? From twenty twenty.
Are you talking about the unduplicated count or does in general?
Our unduplicated count of students in uh two thousand twenty. We had two hundred and seventy-seven and in twenty-one, it says a hundred and ninety-two.
Right, so it's just in the certification, um, in our last presentation. We had side-by-side comparison of the different categories. Um, when you're looking at the unduplicated student count. So there were um drops in all categories. Um, and this is um, we send our information to the state and they determine. Um, even if a student falls into more than one category, they can all only be counted once. So um it's just that the the um, the students that are that were actually in these categories. I think they're um being reduced or they're not being certified.
Okay, okay, um. I would, I would like to know more if it is actually that they're being, but which one is it more of? If it's more of the reduction or. The the certification part. Um, and then I had another question around um the expanded learning time grant. Um, you mentioned that one of our our. Priorities for this grant will be around um literacy. But I also see um that one of our high-level priorities is around mathematics. Um. I I don't know if Assistant Stevens, if that's um for you to respond to.
Well, should we, should we, we're about to get to a discussion of priorities, right?
Yes, that's exactly correct.
Can we just?
So you, do you want me to just wait for a second?
Yeah, can we just wait to see if there's any more questions for um Assistant Superintendent Follinsby, and then we'll get to the priorities? Is that all right?
Yes.
Um, are there any more questions? Cause I'd like to, okay, I'd like to move on then. Thank you so much. Um, so Dr. Stevens, let's start. A a brief, and again, this is, and I know we were gonna have it two weeks ago when you were not able to be here and we're having it now, but. It's still an initial conversation, so I'm hoping we can keep it relatively brief because I know there's a lot of people here for the next item.
Yeah, yeah, I I will move relatively quickly. Um, so um this sort of scorecard, we hope, is just a very easy to read. Sort of interpretation of key figures related to the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, including revenue and some of the pain points. That we'll need to resolve over the next couple of months. I think what you're hearing through Assistant Foll- Assistant Superintendent Follinsby's. Presentation is that we have a lot of one-time money, um, and that we have, you know, sort of a hole that we need to fill in our current L L cap budget. Um, as we sort of think about these numbers, it's also really important that we move into the coming school year, holding in mind a set of high-level priorities. Um, the first category of priority I'm currently defining is support for our students. Um, and I'm sort of describing this very broadly. Um, this needs to look like support for um. Learning time and access to different activities, um, access to peers and social opportunities, clubs, activities, academic remediation. Uh, this sort of category of need that is the result of the pandemic. Uh, to my mind, a warrants a community-wide conversation about how we're going to support our young people. Not just to return into school as if things are normal, uh, but over the course of the this coming semester and even the next eighteen months. Uh, much as Director Babbitt suggested a couple of board meetings ago, we really do need a community-wide conversation about this. And of course, there will be expenses associated with these investments. So I name this as a first high-level priority. Um, there are other high-level priorities that the board has articulated through various actions or that have been longstanding concerns in the Berkeley community. Um, in no particular order, I'll list them here. They include the ongoing fulfillment of the board's Black Lives Matter resolution, which was passed in June. Um, support for Latinx students to develop culturally and linguistically affirming programs. Family engagement, um, we heard earlier in this particular meeting about the positive impact of our OFI team. Um, gender equity continues to be sort of an area of keen interest among the community, wanting to see improvements in our ongoing support. For the prevention of sexual harassment. Um, the upgrade of our business enterprise system um is among the list of priorities. And then moving along, uh, we know that we have important work to do in the area of early literacy support and particularly for uh in supporting students. Who are at risk of um a diagnosis of dyslexia or who have phonological processing issues. Uh, the board passed a resolution over the summer, um, confirming its commitment um to supporting transgender and gender non-conforming students. And there are cost implications to that resolution. Um, ethnic studies continues to be sort of an area of um, sort of uh great interest in Sacramento. And while the state hasn't yet issued a framework or curriculum, um, I know that there's a keen interest here in the district for increasing those investments. Um, I also uh note that we will be um closing our ca- sort of two-year contracts with many of our labor partners. Um, and that we'll be uh entering into contract negotiations for the twenty-two through twenty-four school year period. Uh, and that there may be cost implications associated with that bargaining. Mathematics is also listed here as sort of an ongoing area of concern, and we've seen data in math over the last several board meetings. Um, that sort of justify that concern. Uh, and then finally, an interest in improving our overall communication stance. Um, and that relates particularly to families who are most difficult to connect with and yet who most need to be connected to the district's work. So this is um sort of meant to be for the board's discussion. We hope we're not leaving anything off. Now, we welcome brief comments about this, but it's really this set of priorities that we hope to carry into our committee settings, our community engagement settings. Uh, and that we'll use as the basis for bringing options and eventually proposals to the board as we build our budget over these coming months. Um, so with that, appreciate the opportunity to review that list and look forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Director Stevens. One um, one thing I wanted to ask you is, um, Ms. Charis got kicked off.
Um, yes.
Need you to, need you to upgrade her. She's Berkeley webinar.
I'll try to do that while I follow along with the conversation.
Okay, thanks. Um. So I, so maybe what would be helpful is just each of the board members could um say a few words about. How they're thinking about this, how they're thinking about the priorities, and we can have a discussion, but it also um can just be an opportunity to sort of share your thoughts. And and staff can take that and we can continue to discuss over the coming board meetings. Um, so is there anybody? Sorry, as I see, uh, Vice President Brown, you you started the discussion, so why don't I turn to you?
Uh, thank you, uh, President Alper. I think my question was more so around um ensuring that we still kept mathematics as a high priority. And then we're able to use some of that grant money that was already mentioned to use for, to be set aside for literacy. To ensure that mathematic mathematics was also a part of um that priority, and I see that it is, it has been presented, so. That was my o- original uh question.
I'm gonna put in a um plug for um. I'm gonna put in a um, plug for um, for for. The business enterprise systems. I mean, all of these are important priorities, but um, are for for years, we've been talking about upgrading our. Our human resources and business systems and um, so much of what we want to do is dependent on our ability to. Hire the best people, retain the best people, hire the most diverse group of teachers and and staff. And what we've heard as a board over and over again, for year after year is how out of date our systems are and our administrators. Have been telling us how cumbersome our process is and how how we're losing good people. Because we're we're our processes and systems are so out of date, so. And I don't know where it falls exactly, but it's one that's not likely to always rise to the top because it's it it sounds so technical and um, and unconnected to students. But it really is connected to our ability to provide for students, so I I just want to emphasize the importance of. If the I I actually, we've actually allocated funds in the past, so I don't know if it's a question of resources or or or. Or time to do it. I don't know what the reason we haven't done it yet is. Um, I know there's limited capacity right now, but. Um, I I just think that's really critical in addition to, you know, all the other important priorities. Um, Director Miller.
I think Vice President um, Brown still has something to say. I can down to that.
Sorry, thank you. If I could just say this really quickly, one thing that I think is missing from our um, list of priorities that families have been advocating for. Is emotional uh, learning support for our students, especially um, as they transition back into um, the classroom, and so seeing fund allocation. For that should be a a top priority for us.
All right. Director Miller.
Yeah, Vice President Vice President Brown said the exact same thing I was gonna say, we should, I would, for those one-time funds, no. Yeah, let's um, thinking about what learning looks like this year versus what it will look like next year if we go back to a five um, day schedule, just make sure. That we save funds for that, but also I wanted to point out the connection between ethnic studies and transgender students. Um, at Berkeley High, how it's taught is it's one semester of ethnic studies and one semester of social living, which covers gender issues, and so I want to know if we're if those two are. Are is there some I, is there some like thinking about separating those two kinds of lessons or like dispersing that more throughout learning? Like all grades in the district, if those two are two priorities, because I know at Berkeley High, they're very linked and they're taught in the same year, so I just want to know what the thinking is around that.
Uh, yeah, I appreciate the question. So um, right now, the district doesn't have any centralized capacity to support ethnic studies as a discipline. There are many ethnic studies experiences um, in some of our schools and at the high school. Um, you've just named one of them. Uh, but for us to sort of pursue um, curriculum across multiple schools and grade levels, I think will require um, some investment, probably initially at the central office level. To begin to collate curriculum resources, interpret resources from the state, uh, and then make them accessible to our teachers. The state has a very strong both history, social studies framework and the beginnings of an ethnic studies framework. Um, and those two documents do really emphasize intersectionality um, and include the study of transgender, gender, non-conforming people. So I'd love to see it develop in that way, but the notion here is to build enough capacity to design a plan for Berkeley Unified.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't I wasn't advocating for the separation of this, do I understand the um, connections? I was just saying, um, considering. I mean, they are two separate goals, um, listening priorities, but I just wanted to know how that was being approached, seeing how closely they're taught together.
I appreciate the question. Yeah, we're we're sort of at the starting point of the work in the ethnic studies realm as a district.
Director Sinai.
Thank you, um. I think um, I I really agree with President Alper in looking at our business enterprise and our infrastructure, because you know, that's the. It if there's a weak a weak a weak link there, it has an impact on everything. You know, to me, the list, um, I guess just to clarify a little bit with what um, Vice President Brown and Director Miller said. I guess I thought that very first um, slide where you talked about student supports. Was kind of where the social, emotional and the mental health and behavioral health supports are also, is that right? So we while you kind of had it standalone, it's one of the, you kind of highlighted it as a priority in a sense. Did I get that right?
Yeah, that that's exactly right. I I put it first very deliberately. It had its own sort of, you know, sort of centerpiece because it is such an urgent issue and it's so broad. It's academic, it's social, emotional, it's social. Um, and so want to make sure that we're really highlighting that that work. Is a really critical priority for us.
Okay, so I think what I'm trying to wrap my head around is that, you know, it's it's the list, it's a good list. And there's overlap or there's integration or intersectionality or whatever the right term is. So when we talk about communication and we talk about family support. And we talk about Latinx and African-American Black Lives Matter, it's like, there's a connection there, and I think we have this tendency. To perpetuate silos, you know, so we do the African-American success project. We do the Black Lives Man, you know, we do this, and I think what I what I'm hoping we do in this round. Is that we actually look at the integration of those goals and those priorities. And and use that as a way to frame, what is it we want to see by the end of the school year? That we've moved a needle on, you know, what's the research that says what we're doing now, we should continue to strengthen? Or we need to do something differently. So um, you know, to me, it's kind of like the context of stepping back a little bit. And seeing how those how the how the list of eight or nine priorities. Fit together into some key objectives, and then what's the budget that we need to do to make that happen? So. That that would be, I think, a more um, digestible way. For me to understand it so that I don't just see a bunch of budget line items that are like trying to hit this or trying to hit that. So that would be my.
And thank you for that.
Director Vasudev.
Yeah, I think that's an interesting idea, Director Sinai, just want to piggyback on that a little bit, like just having a strategic framework, right, around equity. And then having all, you know, calling out all the different categories, but I think, you know, I I. I would love to get some like a retreat between the board and, you know, senior leadership at the district where we all try to build consensus on an equity framework for our district. And what does that look like, right? But I do also see the value in calling out explicitly the categories of students that are falling behind. And so calling out our, you know, our Black Lives Matter resolution and calling out, uh, you know, culturally affirming programs for Latinx students. With regards to that high-level goal, Superintendent Stevens, my feedback is that I want to make sure that we're also addressing the academic support for Latinx students, right? That these are not just culturally affirming programs, but programs that are aimed at closing the opportunity gaps. That we see that are exacerbated right now because of the pandemic and particularly for Latinx English language learners. So I want to make sure that we're, you know, explicit in also the academic support for Latinx students. With regards to ethnic studies, I'm very pleased to see that because I think, you know, I really liked hearing. The student perspective from Student Board Director Miller, like what does it look like at the high school? And I'm very excited to see this trickle down to our earliest learners. I've really enjoyed. You know, just watching my kindergarten talk about Black Lives Matter, and I am really excited about expanding this, right, for this kind of experience for all of our students, so. I'm very excited um, that our students will will see themselves reflected in, you know, the diversity of our student body will see themselves reflected in. In our curriculum and really excited to move towards that direction. And then my last comment was about just the office of family engagement and equity. One of the things that I wanted um, to ask you, Superintendent Stevens, is. Is there, in addition, you know, to to just as a high-level goal, like funding more positions, has there been any thought into just evaluation on our equity goals? And I'm thinking on, you know, the the work that Ophi does, because I'm thinking about the Berkeley Public Schools Fund and just what a great resource we have, and I love how closely they work with our Ophi staff. But really, um, being able to evaluate, like, how many times does Ophi go and support an IEP, right? How many times does Ophi staff? Go and support uh, food scarcity issues, right? And having that data so that we can work closer with the Public Schools Fund. In targeting investments and knowing like, hey, if Ophi staff, if Spanish-speaking Ophi staff is going to a lot of IEP meetings, well, then maybe we need to have more support in Spanish. For special education, right? Like some of, just having a little bit more of a data-driven process around um, Ophi's work, and so is there any any thinking around just. Providing more infrastructure support for that for that work?
Um, I appreciate the question, so so the, um, yes, there's been some thinking, although it's preliminary. I am engaged with the supervisor of the Ophi team, Anne Marie Caligari, who I believe is listening in this evening. Um, uh, and she's also really um, interested in the ways in which um, we can begin to develop sort of effectiveness data for the team. You know, not to have everybody reporting on their every action with a family, but to really understand what efficacy looks like currently and how we improve it. So so there is thinking about program evaluation, and then I know that um, Anne Marie Caligari also has a lot of um, sort of. Thinking about how the mission of the team can be expanded, um, to include things like community partnerships, um, to um, build on what have been very positive experiences this year. With family seminars. Um, so I know that there's a vision there, um, and look forward to coming conversations over these next few months. To sort of bring some of the priorities in more concrete form uh, back to the board, you know, really in the form of proposals.
That's great, and I love that 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 office has piloted a lot of great different, you know, programmatic elements. Would love to see. That kind of built out in a more culturally responsive way with more multilingual support, so thank you.
Well, because she's listening, um, let me just then, you know, tip my hat to Anne Marie Caligari and her whole team. Um, you know, they have done really um, amazing work over the course of this pandemic. And we're all very grateful to them.
Director Babbitt, you, yeah, I didn't see your hand, but go ahead.
I guess I'd just like to um, echo the importance of improving our um, business management and our back office systems. Not only will it help uh, increase our. The ways in which we hire, but I think it will also improve job satisfaction for many of our employees. When we're able to get these things right and when we're able to access our funds and know what's being spent. We can actually use our budget line items more efficiently and not have so many carryover um, funds in future years. That were really meant to drive outcomes in the current year. Um, so that would be of highest priority, especially when we're looking at one-time uh, funds. And then I also want to emphasize thinking outside the box. Most of these things on the list are, you know, doesn't. Create a lot of creativity to put these things on the list. Um, so how are we going to improve first-level instruction? You know, and when we talk about um, social, emotional supports, how do we really tie that into trauma-informed care and instruction? Right, and really being laser-focused on, it's not just social, emotional help, but it's how in that first-level instruction. We interact based on the best practices of trauma-informed care. And then um, as Spencer Prenter, the co-chair, said today, how can we partner more with the African-American Studies Department? And to really expand and uh, bring a coherent program together with all of our uh, various initiatives. And uh, sustainability, how can we add sustainability issues and reinvigorate our sustainability plan? Especially through some of these one-time funds, um, that will actually generate revenues also or cost savings um, down the road. And so that was um, that would be important to add. And did I say the seventh-period day?
No.
Always been a huge fan of a seventh-period day, and I really believe coming out of this year of um. We gotta turn, think of another way besides learning loss, but uh, lack of learning, that's not better, but anyway. As we try to create a more strength-based learning system going forward. Um, a seventh-period day, especially at the middle schools, even if we just were able to do it for a couple of years to help uh, scaffold in some of the things that our students have missed. I think would be key going into next year, and we really, if we can get a pilot program at Longfellow, we really need to be um, taking this time. To make that happen. And again, that's just improving first-level instruction, and it's giving our students the ability not to have to choose between a two interventions. You know, like two histories, they can actually have that enrichment class that they also deserve and need. That, those are my comments. Thank you.
I'm gonna move this along except I want to second two of the things that Director Babbitt just said, the the um, the seven-period day is is also something that. I've long thought we should explore, and that I think a lot of our staff and teachers are interested in and piloting it at one of our middle schools seems like. You know, a a great idea. I, so so I want to second that, and then what was the thing, the second to last thing you said, Director Babbitt? Oh, sustainability plan. Yes, I think that should be on the list because it's it it was a few years ago, but it was also a plan that the board passed. That that a lot of work went into it. There's a lot of very concrete um, action items, and it's a and and it and it. Maybe the one-time funds, you know, are are, you know, really perfect for that because they're. Because some of it are just one-time expenses, so thank you for bringing that up, Director Babbitt. Um, okay. Um, I don't see any other hands, and and I know we have a big item to get to, so I'm gonna move this along. Is that okay? All right, then move us along to item fourteen-point-one, which is an action item. Uh, the request to approve the staff recommendation of the adult school parking lot is a location for BUSD workforce housing. Doctor Stevens, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks very much, and in fact, I'm turning it uh, directly over to Executive Director for. What is?
Actually, yes, and Director Sinai has um, I'm turning over Director Sinai, actually, who's gonna facilitate this item. And then she'll turn it over to Director Kalis.
I think that that's the right order, yes.
In my rush, I completely forgot our plan, so.
Thank you, President Alper. It's getting late. Um, I'm I'm thrilled to be able to um, help in facilitation of this discussion. What I wanted to do was actually spend a couple of minutes um, talking at the beginning of this um, item. To give some context um, for our our new board members as well as the community. On how we got to where we are, and so what I'd like to do is take a few minutes, kind of give this introduction of how we got here. And then I will pass it over to Executive Director Kalis to facilitate um, the panel presentation with him and um, RCD and Mithun. Um, and then we'll open it up for for discussion. So I I wanna, I wanna again, thank the community for coming out tonight. And the staff for coming forward with the presentation and the recommendation for workforce housing. Again, to give a little bit of context, as far back as two thousand sixteen. The district worked with Mr. Calvin Fong to scan all of its properties. To identify what sites could be best suited for workforce housing for BUSD employees. And when we say BUSD educators, we mean teachers and staff. It's very clear. It's not management, it's not administrators, it's teachers and staff. Consideration for Mr. Fong's study included site capacity, current zoning regulations and amenities such as transportation corridors. Mr. Fong's study concluded that there were four opportunity sites worthy of consideration for workforce housing. That was the Berkeley Adult School Parking Lot, West Campus, Vacant Field on University at Browning. Berkeley High Teacher Parking slash the former Tennis Courts on Millvia and the Corporation Yard on Oregon Street. The site scan that Mr. Fong did followed a two thousand fourteen capacity assessment of our school sites. In light of anticipated student growth at this time, at that time. While student growth projections didn't materialize like the board had thought it would. The district had a clear map of where and how we could add classrooms to our existing school sites. Without having to build new schools or adapt the Berkeley Adult School. And just to note, we've been hovering around ten thousand students for a number of decades. So while there might be some concern about um, eliminating future opportunity for student growth. We have an assessment of where we can add more classrooms on our elementary school sites. Um, around the same time as Mr. Fong's site assessment, Board Director Josh Daniels worked with a team from UC Berkeley. Center for Cities and Schools to conduct a survey of teachers and staff to gauge the demand for educator housing. Overwhelmingly, the survey demonstrated support for housing. In two thousand sixteen, as we were kind of doing some of this work, the state passed the Teacher Housing Act. Allowing dedicated district staff housing on school district property. It is the only public or private property where you can dedicate housing just for district employees. Without violating any of the fair housing laws. This is the only mechanism where that can happen. In two thousand eighteen, the voters of Berkeley overwhelmingly passed Measure O, a hundred and thirty-five million dollar affordable housing bond. This bond specifically identifies funding for educator housing in our community. When I was campaigning uh, for for board in two thousand eighteen. Affordable housing for educators was one of the most popular topics discussed at the door. When I joined the board, we heard testimony after testimony from teachers and staff about how the high cost of living in Berkeley. Has forced them into commuting long distances to and from work or has left them feeling. or has left them feeling vulnerable and housing unstable. Many talked about needing to find work elsewhere. Workforce housing isn't just a ni- nice thing to do. And one project of eighty to a hundred units is not intended to meet the housing needs of all fifteen hundred district employees. But it will help significantly to recruit and retain our valued staff in need of local affordable housing. In February of 2019, the staff presented these four sites and recommended that the board approve the Berkeley Adult School Parking Lot and the West Campus Field as the sites for deeper feasibility analysis. These two sites have the greatest capacity. They're currently zoned for multifamily units and they don't require costly demolition. The board approved the recommendation and we were able to partner with the city in securing $150,000 to steady the two sites. I was honored to be asked by the board to be the point person for workforce housing. And we directed staff to move forward to study the two sites. Since then, I've met with the Berkeley Adult School neighbors twice, the second time with the superintendent and our planning team. And we hosted a Zoom public meeting last November for teachers and staff and a second one for the community. Both those community meetings were, were not well attended, kind of being in the midst of COVID, but they, they were hosted. We created a housing subcommittee that included the board president at the time, Judy Appel and myself and our labor partners. There was a smaller committee that included community representatives to select the team for the feasibility study. And we selected resources for community development in Mithun, who you will hear from tonight. When the planning team came onboard, we did another staff survey. In the middle of the feasibility study process, Oxford Elementary School was deemed to be sitting on an active landslide, forcing us to relocate the, the school to West Campus and converting the field to a playground. There was no way we could have anticipated that. While there was not been a permanent decision on the future of Oxford, it is clear that the school will remain at that site until the board can make a decision on the future. Last year, the city of Berkeley moved to reserve over $20 million in the second tranche of Measure O funding specifically for a BUSD proposal for workforce housing. The way the bond works is it gets issued in three to four tranches. And they've designated the second tranche for, for school district housing. In the coming weeks, the city council slated to approve a notice of funding application, a NOFA, dedicated to the BUSD housing with a deadline for proposals sometime this summer. The parking lot at the Berkeley Adult School is a prime site to launch our efforts to provide affordable housing for our staff. According to surveys, only thirty percent of our staff live in Berkeley. The adult school parking lot is convenient. It's much closer than commuting from out of town. It's on a major transit corridor in its nearby boulevards. Last month, the Board Facilities Committee, which is me and President Alper, heard the staff and the RCD Mithun presentation, as well as a thirty-minute presentation of alternatives by community member Deep Mar Lawrence. We appreciated the creative approach presented by Mr. Lawrence. And I believe that looking at distributing housing across different locations is not off the table for the future. What the project is that is before us tonight is one project and not necessarily the last project. However, we will be able to get something built. Well, we'll be able to get something built in the next four to five years on the Berkeley Adult School Parking Lot and be able to leverage the voter-approved bond. The facilities committee supported the recommendation and are supporting it and coming forward to the school board. To be ready to submit a proposal this summer, we have to have a developer onboard as soon as possible. As I pass the rest of this presentation to staff, I want the community to be assured that this is just the beginning of a community engagement project, process. And it's the clear expectation and will be defined as part of the RFP RFQ process that the selected developer will work with our labor partners, the community and the district to design and develop a project. Thank you for letting me take the time to update you. And now I will pass it on to Executive Director Kalis and our planning team.
Great. Thank you, Director Sinai. I feel like you've delivered much of the presentation. So that was great. I'm gonna go ahead and share, you know, and I don't have it. Dr. Stevens, can you either allow me to share a screen or put up the presentation?
Yes, just one moment if you don't mind.
Okay, great. All right. Okay. So thank you. So as Director Sinai just led to, we talk about how we got where we are. And Director Sinai was able to give us a lot of background, going all the way back to 2014 and 2016. What I wanted to do this evening was just briefly start with the what and the why. I think it's very important that we do look at that. So first and foremost, just to reiterate what Director Sinai stated, workforce housing would allow BUSD to continue to recruit and retain quality educators. That's something that we know that the Berkeley community is committed to. And I think it's really important that we call out that educators includes both of BUSD's teachers as well as our classified staff. Based on the surveys that have gone out over the last few years, we've had a lot of numbers thrown around tonight. We know that only thirty percent live in Berkeley and that there, many of them are faced with long commutes from elsewhere. But we also knew, know that eighty-two percent of the renters work for BUSD have stated that the high cost of housing have created the financial, have created financial pressures for them. Additionally, fifty-four percent have considered leaving BUSD due to the high cost of housing. And sixty-nine percent believe that the high cost of housing negatively impacts their long-term ability to stay at BUSD. I apologize for reading the slides verbatim, but I felt this was very important information to have up there for the public to go back and look at it, which is why I am doing that. Thirty-one percent of our staff have moved one or more times due to increased housing costs. And additionally, eighty-six percent of renters advocating for workforce housing would help recruit and retain quality educators. Picking up on the pre-development work where Director Sinai left off. In 2019, the board directed staff to perform an analysis of BUSD property for the purpose of housing affordable, excuse me, for affordable workforce housing. This was dovetailed on to the end of the work that had been done prior. And throughout the analysis, there was collaboration with our labor partners, with the city of Berkeley, with Be Home and with the board designee. In 2019, the board approved the city-funded contract with RCD for pre-development analysis to be done. The board voted to focus pre-development on the two most promising properties at the time. Those were the field at West Campus and the parking lot at the Berkeley Adult School. Some of the things that were included in the pre-development analysis were the feasibility of the two sites, zoning restrictions, environmental concerns, massing and density, transportation and accessibility, staff interest and community concerns. Before I pass it over to RCD, I, I, what I want to do is I just want to talk about the recommended BUSD site and why. The staff tonight is recommending to the board to approve that we continue with this work. And we use the Berkeley Adult School, the front parking lot along San Pablo, that site to actually construct workforce housing. The why is shortly after pre-development work began, as was mentioned early, earlier, the Oxford Elementary Campus was relocated to West Campus due to the site conditions that removed that property. The BAS property located on San Pablo is also properly zoned. This is really important. There is no variance needed. And this type of construct, construction absolutely aligns with the intended use of the zoning. The analysis showed BAS location to have positive attributes for this type of project. Those include location, those include transportation, they include zoning and many others. Why now? As Director Sinai talked about, measure all opportunity for partial project funding. And optimistically, and very optimistically, we're three to four years before the site design and construction is approved and completed. So the reality is, is the longer we wait to add, to prove this, the longer we wait to build it. And we have this need to continue to recruit and retain quality educators, not only now, but for the years to come. One of the questions that's been brought up a lot is what if the site is needed for another type of school? I've heard K five, I've heard K twelve, I've heard many different options. As Director Al or Director Sinai mentioned, we have capacity at our other sites to add on if we needed to. But the BAS site will continue to be a viable option as a school for all grade levels. Some folks have asked to talk about the CDE recommenda- the CDE recommendations for acreage. Acreage recommendations are waived for urban schools all the time. This is standard practice. It's done for pretty much all of our schools in Berkeley. And BAS, even if this were built out as a different site, would still have opportunities that the other sites lack. And what I mean by is even with adding a field, even with adding a playground and those things, you'd still have a large parking lot in the rear that we don't have at any of our other, other elementary campuses. So with that, I'm gonna pass it over to RCD and Mithun for a few slides and then I'll come back and speak to the board a little more.
John, can you introduce our RCD and Mithun?
Yes, I apologize. Sorry about that. So from RCD, we have Carolyn Bookhart, who really led the pre-development work. And with her, we also have tonight Lisa Jacks from Mithun. So sorry about that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So just to reiterate, our scope was really to complete feasibility analysis and studies for this potential development opportunity. We were not asked to develop any kind of plan, you know, specific plan, but really to do the studies that John outlined, which, you know, mostly were an updated staff survey, comparative studies of other districts that are working in this space, a financial feasibility, zoning and capacity studies, some listings, community listing sessions primarily, and really present what is possible and how to go about moving forward if this is something that the board wants to do. So again, and you both, Director Sinai and, and John, you really presented a lot. So I will just try to cover a few highlights. And then Lisa and I are both here to answer any questions if you want to talk about any of these points in more detail. As mentioned, you know, we did do an updated study in 2020. There was a, I mean, a staff survey, excuse me. In 2020, there was a staff survey done in 2017. Both showed seventy-four percent of staff that are currently renters are interested in living in affordable workforce housing sponsored by the district. Overwhelming majority of folks that are really struggling to live in Berkeley and you know, are experiencing financial pressure to really stay in the district. We looked at the financial feasibility of developing a, a development on this site and what financing might be available. There are a number of different funding sources that could be assembled to finance a development like this without any funds from the school district itself. Other than the contribution of land, which could also be contributed through a long-term ground lease so that the school district would still maintain long-term ownership of the land. And then the rest of the financing could come from other sources of financing. Like the city of Berkeley Measure O funding, that would be a key piece to making this project feasible. And it is important to note that that is somewhat time sensitive. It's a finite amount of funding. There's a lot of demands for that funding as well. And then similarly, there's a state middle income funding program and state infrastructure grant funding program that could help support this project that is subject to annual renewals through the state budgeting process. So it's not guaranteed that that will be there in future years. As far as just kind of an outlined structure of how this might play out, what's recommended is that the, is that the school district would actually develop a request for proposals that developer, designer and property management teams could present a variety of different design concepts and ideas for this site and different financing strategies and also a different set of expertise and experience around building this type of housing and managing it. And so you could really get a lot of ideas and team proposals to, to select from. And then once the, that team is selected, you could enter into an initial agreement to do, you know, kind of initial design development, extensive community engagement work through the entitlements process. And then, once the concept is really well-refined, enter into a more detailed long-term ground lease with that developer. As I mentioned, there's also a number of other school districts in the Bay Area that are also struggling with the same issues and working through, working forward with developing affordable workforce housing, just like, you know, Berkeley is looking into. So there's, you know, peer efforts at Palo Alto, Mountain View, San Francisco and Daly City to draw from as well. Next slide, thanks. So as John mentioned, we did, we have focused more, we did look at West Campus and Adult School Site, given the kind of short and midterm uses for West Campus. We're really focusing in the Adult School Site. And the development area that we really are focusing in on is the parking lot that's renting on San Pablo. And the reason for that is, you know, that area itself actually presents pretty substantial amount of square footage to develop something like this. That area is also appropriately zoned and reflects really the, the guidelines for the specific plan area for the, the San Pablo corridor, which really calls for high-density multifamily and mixed-use development on this site and along that corridor. And it also keeps, you know, all of the adult school building and the back parking lot and area intact so that all of those activities were, which are very important and add a lot of benefit to the community can continue to be usable and functional and have, you know, the opportunity for multiple uses for the long term in the future. And so with that, we, we did study the zoning and developed just some capacity studies. These are just to illustrate what is allowable and what's possible on this site. Again, once you get proposals from other development teams, you might get a lot of different ideas and design kind of concepts and visions, but this shows you what could be done and is allowable. Next slide, please. So the capacity studies that we did to show that the site and the zoning have plenty of capacity to, to create, you know, at least a hundred new homes. And also replacement of the adult school parking lot as well as new parking spaces for the residential uses. So there's quite a lot of capacity on this, on this site. We also did do some community listing sessions. And we very clearly heard some important concerns and comments that should certainly be included in kind of the criteria for the developer RFPs and expectations of challenges and considerations that would need to be accommodated in their design solutions for this site. So a couple of the key areas were, you know, definitely making sure that the adult school can continue all of its activities. The parking is a big concern, both during interim, during construction, the developer team will need to find some interim solutions for parking so that, you know, the activities can continue. And then replacement parking for that site. There were some concerns around, you know, where to locate the access for vehicles into the building that would need to be accommodated. And also just creating, you know, scale and architecture that will fit in well with the context of the neighborhood. So those are a few key highlights that we heard from the community that would need to be incorporated in the RFP and design process. And then also something that could definitely be articulated in the requirements for the developer team would to be, you know, expectations around community engagement with the neighbors, with the adult school, with staff and obviously with the city to make sure that they're really coming up with some good design solutions for all the goals around this development opportunity. And then the next slide is just, you know, a couple of key points about what, what would be the next steps. I think one thing that's important is just making sure that, that the district identifies internal staff person or people and or an owner's rep of some kind. That can be kind of the key person or point person or persons that will be leading this initiative that could go on, you know, three to five years. The developer team is really gonna do the majority of the work, but there's still gonna be, you know, ongoing decisions to be made, contracts and agreements to be negotiated and things like that. So you need to have kind of a, you know, a designated capacity in, in, you know, in, internal to BUSD. Then the other suggestion that some of the, the peer districts are doing is creating like a, an oversight board or committee that could include representatives from, 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 from staff, from the, you know, from the school board, the adult school neighbors, whoever you feel like is from the, you know, from the school board, the adult school neighbors, whoever you feel like is the appropriate stakeholders that could help with really overseeing, establishing those criteria around selecting the developer team and requirements for the development, like for example, replacement parking for the adult school. And then really overseeing the process and, and being a decision-making board around design decisions. There'll also be decisions around this kind of occupancy and tenure. Some nuances around, you know, just kind of tying housing to your employment will be some, some areas where decisions will need, will need to be made. And then that board could also be, you know, an appeals board or just an oversight board for once the building is up and running and operating. And then with the developer team, you know, like I said, they're really going to take the lead on kind of all the work through, you know, developing probably a number of design scenarios to present and work through with the community to really come up with a good final design plan and solution, securing entitlement, securing all the financing, overseeing construction, developing all the, the detailed kind of management and lease-up plans and agreements and leases and things. And then really being the ongoing owner and property manager on a day-to-day basis for the long term.
Great. Thanks, Carolyn. So tonight, i- if the board approves the development of workforce housing at the San Pablo Avenue location, staff will finalize and release the developer RFP. To Carolyn's point and what was in the slides before this and what Director Sinai had spoken about, some of the requirements set forth in that developer RFP came from those listening sessions, and we know that there will be more community engagement. No vehicular entry or exit on Virginia Street, fire access excluded, right? That's how it is currently now. We understand now that there's a bike boulevard. Community engagement during pre-design. And that what I would have to say, I should have added robust board-appointed design committee to work with the developer. So we see that as really being some district staff, some of the local neighborhood, the BAS neighborhood, BAS staff member or members, and just really folks who can work with the developers on ensuring that the, the property that's built aligns with what the neighborhood is. And then maintaining BAS parking for students and staff, maximizing the residential parking as appropriate, and then developing creative solutions to help BAS maintain its identity on San Pablo Avenue. So with that, you know, before I stop sharing my screen, this is an action item. Obviously, we'll open up to take some questions. But what we are looking for is for the, for the board to recommend, or to approve rather, for us to move forward with this as the site and for us to release the RFP. So thank you, and I'll stop sharing.
Thank you, John. So just before we launch into discussion and Laura, I see your hand up. Is, you know, I want to give a particular shout out to a lot of different people who've been involved in this process from our former and current board members, Mayor Adagene and our Housing Advisory Committee on the city side. A number of community members, David Mayer and the Be Home folks. Also, all of the folks from the Berkeley Adult School Neighborhood who've been actively engaged in the dialogue. There's a lot of folks who, who have been involved in this and, and I really appreciate everybody's time. So what I'd like to do is go ahead and open it for discussion. And then we can move toward the item, but particularly I'd like to see if there's some questions for Carolyn and for Lisa and for John for clarification. So Director Babett.
Uh, thank you. Uh, yes. So I have lots of questions because you all mentioned active community engagement. However, most of the people in that neighborhood have not been invited or did not even know that this was coming to pass. And so how are we going to ensure going forward that when we say community engagement, we understand that we don't mean just two meetings poorly attended? And we, we say that we've had some community engagement. That's one of my concerns. And then I liked that Director Sinai said this is just the first. So does that mean are we putting all twenty million dollars that's been set aside into this one project? Or is it something that we can scale still in other locations? So that we can reach those lower levels of impact to different neighborhoods and we can actually spread our staff out among the city? Because it is important that they are closer to actual school sites so that they can do the walking and the biking to school. And so I don't know how many people really want to live with a hundred and ten of their actual coworkers, right? So can we still put some more of those other sites on the table, or is all of the money going into this one site? Those are just a couple of my initial questions.
So I can, I can try to answer those for you, Director Babett. So in regards to the, the Measure O money, we, we don't actually know the exact amount that will be in that funding award yet. But right now, the pro, the only project that's actually being considered is at the, is for the Berkeley Adult School. So I think when Director Sinai talks about future projects, that would be just that, it would be future, it would require a lot more work, a lot further assessments to see what we could do at other locations throughout the district. So to answer your question, yes, the funding that we would receive as part of Measure O, I believe it's envisioned that it will go towards this project alone. In regard to the community engagement, we worked with the adult school. They have a list of, they have a community member who sort of is like the, the, the de facto head of the, or not the head, but he sort of facilitates communication with all of the neighbors. We did put this out there to them, and obviously we can try other ways through, and we can have the developer do further advertising. But we, we did put it out there and try to get them to attend. It was unfortunate that it was poorly attended. But it was put out there. So obviously, we can require the developer to do further advertising and to use public advertising means. But we put it out there, there, we put it out in our eight plus news. We tried as many sources as we have within the district to advertise for these.
So Director Babett, I'd also add to that, when we look at the RF, and again, John maybe can talk about the difference between RFP and RFQ, but when we look at the qualifications for a developer, one of the things that I think we need to put in that is a track record, a proven track record for community engagement. And that they have to be able to demonstrate how they've engaged with neighbors and the broader community in their, in the projects that they've done. So I think that would be a requirement.
And then one final question around the parking spaces that will still be available. Is there an opportunity to make that a garage so that the Berkeley Adult School participants can actually still have more parking? If it's a layered garage instead of just the fifty flat spots? I do want to acknowledge that our Berkeley Adult School community, our families who are working, they're picking their kids up from, from school, they're dropping them off, they're going to dinner, and then they're rushing to class. So it's not like they're going to actually be taking the bus, which means they do kind of need parking spots to, to make that kind of lifestyle really work. And that parking lot is pretty full when school is actually in session. And it's important to me that we preserve the Berkeley Adult School community as well. So I would like to see that we can.
Carolyn, could you tell us about the massing study?
So I can real quick, before I pass it over to Carolyn, it's a great question, and thank you. We intend to maintain the number of parking spots for the adult school as well as to maximize parking for, for the residents as well. So I'll, I'll, I'll pass it over to Carolyn, but just, I wanted to answer that because it's already, it's something that was already considered in the massing study.
Right, that's true. The capacity study that, that Lisa and Methune and we did does show a replacement of the adult school parking lot, which would be for that use. And then separately also parking created for the housing. So that could be a requirement in the RFP. And I think, just so I wanted to add one thing about the community engagement is, you know, there has been some really good information that we've collected from the community so far, like the requirement, you know, and the need for this parking and the need for, you know, vehicular traffic not coming on Virginia Avenue, for example. Those things can be put in your RFP to start with so that already the proposals that you would get would start with ideas and concepts that are already incorporating that community feedback to, as a starting point. And then, and then I think the other thing is, as far as our study, you know, there was, you know, there's been so much kind of working with, on, you know, designing a plan because our scope was really just to, to see what's possible. And so once you actually have a developer team that's selected to move forward and create a design that's going to work here, there's a lot more opportunity for community engagement at that point because then they can start. Well, they can, again, like I said, they can start with the feedback we've already heard. And then they can also start redesigning and re, you know, responding. Our scope was, was just really to study the site, whereas the developer can then listen more to the community and to the staff and then start redesigning and saying, well, how about this? Well, how about that? And so there's, I think some of it is just, you know, the, our scope was very limited and, because we weren't really designing anything. When you get the developer involved, they'll be able to have more of a iterative process with the, the various stakeholders around the development.
Okay, I do have one more question. I'm sorry, sorry. If we pass this, because we don't have a robust sense of what the community, those neighbors are, are feeling, are we going to set the city council up that they're going to get a lot of complaints back? Because this housing has moved into their neighborhood? Like how, how's this next phase going to impact the city council or future actions that that neighborhood may have?
So I, I, I don't know how to answer that. I mean, the community absolutely can speak to, to city council, right? And they may. I, I, Director Sinai, I'm going to look to you to see if there's anything that you've helped to answer this. It's, it's a really hard question for me to answer, Director Babett, because I, I can't predict what the community will or will not do. So I'm not sure. Sorry.
I mean, I think the reality is, Director Babett, is like whenever there's a development, the development has to go through city permitting process. So there, that is another layer of community engagement that is their right and they should be engaged with that. They already had a meeting with Councilmember Casarwani the other day. So they're already engaging their council member, you know, and I think the issue is that we need to pick a developer who will work with the community. And I do have to say, we have listened to, the community doesn't feel like they've been heard because we're not agreeing with them on everything. But they did a thirty-minute presentation to the facilities community. We've been in conversation with them and we want to continue to be in conversation with them. It's not a done deal. And they have a right to also go to their city. So, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a very engaged process. And we need to find a developer who respects that process.
But, and, but could I just interject, Director Sinai, because what you said is, 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 is true, but it's also, we've heard this, we don't agree with some members of the, of the community and some immediate neighbors. Because we, we have also heard from neighbors, including tonight, but also in our subcommittee meeting and also for, over email, who are very much in favor of the project. So I think there's, there's, you know, views on both sides, which is to be expected, but I just wanted to mention that as well.
And one thing I might add too is that this site is, you know, the, this development concept is in compliance with the zoning and the general plan for this site. And so you know, there are, you know, there's sort of a process for approving, you know, a project like this if it's in compliance.
Right, there's no zoning variances needed for this.
Right, so there's not as much discretionary decision-making that would be required at the city council around the zoning for this.
But there's design review and things like that, right?
Yes.
So I'm going to go, I've got President Alper, Vice President Brown, and Director Basidaf. So why don't we go in that order?
Okay. Thanks, Director Sinai. Thanks for your leadership on this issue. And I, and you mentioned him, but I also, and I think he's listening, I think he's one of the thousands who are listening, is our former colleague Josh Daniels, who really, really was the, there were so many members, so many partners, but he really was the driving force on the board when he was on the board to, to initiating this, this initiative and, and driving it forward a number of years ago. And, and as you sort of laid out really well, I thought, Director Sinai, this has been a many, many years in, in the, in the works. And I'm, I'm really excited about it and supportive of staff's proposal. And I've spent a lot of time thinking about it, both on the subcommittee and talking with Director, Executive Director Kalis about it, talking with neighbors. My parents live in, are neighbors. And I think it's a really exciting project there, for, for all the reasons that have been discussed, but I'll just say a few, a, a few things that that convinced me that this is the right thing to do. As, as Carolyn just mentioned, this is completely within the zoning for this, for this location. The parking, which Director Babett mentioned, I agree, is important. The parking is accounted for, both the current adult school parking, which is important. It is often filled up at night when, when many of our adult school students are there. And my understanding is that we'll be able to account for both that parking and the right, the, the proportion of parking for the new residents that is whatever the, you know, the, the current guidelines are, which I know the city is going through a lot of discussions about. It's not something I'm an expert on, but essentially parking will be taken care of a number of the community and neighborhood concerns, for example, about the, the entrance on San Pablo versus Virginia will be accounted for by the developer. That'll be in the RFP, right?
Yeah, it's a stipulation in the RFP.
Okay. And, and, and then, and then the Measure O money, there is, there is a time, you know, there, there's a timeline that we need to meet in order to access those funds. But I don't think that this is a rushed process. We, we've been working on this for, for many years. And we now have the ability to access those funds that the voters voted for because educator housing, as Director Sinai said, educator housing was included in the, in the ballot language, it was on the ballot. And I think that's one of the main reasons why our community voted for that, for that measure. And so to, to be able to put in the, the many, many hours of work that it has taken to get us in a position where we can actually access those funds is a real testament to our staff. Because we're in the middle of dealing with so many other pressing needs. And we're doing something that takes up a lot of our staff's time for something that we're not going to realize for four or five years. Even if we, you know, put the pedal to the metal tonight. And I think it's hard to be that forward-thinking. And so I, I really appreciate your leadership, Director Kalis, and yours, Director Sinai. Our teachers have spoken that they, and our, and our classified staff, that they, that they do need this, that they do want this, and that, and that it's working in other communities that have tried it. And so I think we should too, and I think it'll be successful. The last thing I'll say is, this is sort of echoing what you said, Director Sinai, but I, I appreciate the, the presentation we heard at the subcommittee from, from Deep Mar with a, with a creative approach to, a different approach to providing educator housing in the district, which would be dispersing it across the district. We, I, I, we read the proposal ahead of time. We, we heard the proposal, we asked questions. It's interesting, it's creative. I just really disagree with it. I don't think it's the right way to go. I don't, and because I think it's much easier to disperse students across the district if, if student population increases. It's not what our trends are. And as Director Sinai mentioned, our population has remained what it is for decades. But if it does increase, as we thought it might a few years ago, it's much easier to add students at different school sites. And that's an analysis that we have done as a district. We have it ready to go. We know what sites we could add students to. That, that is much easier to do, I think, than adding educator housing at different sites across the city. And if we did that, and if we completely changed course now and did that, the reality is it just wouldn't happen because we wouldn't be able to access the Measure O funds, which are, which are critical to this project. The, 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 the beauty of this approach that we're doing now is that it, that it requires zero dollars, zero general fund dollars essentially from the district. We put up the land as, as, as I think Carolyn mentioned, we put up the land, none of our money. There's the, the Measure O money, and then the, the developer finances the rest. And we're able to provide affordable housing to our educators. That's the way we should do it. And, and that That's the way we should do it. And, um, and that, and, and approving this tonight is the only way it's gonna happen. So I'm very supportive. I appreciate the neighbors' concerns. I've listened to them, I hear them. And we can incorporate them and we want to keep hearing from them. And to some extent, I disagree with them.
Vice President Brown.
Um, thank you. I want to echo, um, President Alper's sentiments and, and thanks to um, Josh Daniels and his colleagues on the board who helped to get this work started and to our very own, um, Director Julie Sinai, who picked up the, I'm gonna mess up my metaphors too, who picked up the mantle and continued, um, this work in addition to all of the other, uh, school or director tasks that she has and this means, in, in addition to our staff who work so hard, who work so hard to be able to present this to us today. So thank you to John, Carolyn, Lisa, who are on um, this evening. I had a question in regards to, um, the unit, um, sorry, you know, it's a good, uh, to the, the unit mix. So I see that the unit mix is sixty percent of her studio, one bedroom housing and forty percent for two bedroom and three bedroom housing. Um, out of the seventy-five percent of our, uh, BUSD renters who express interest in workforce housing are the majority of those, uh, individuals, um, single individuals or families. I mean, I ask that question, um, because do, is, is forty, will forty percent suffice the needs of our, uh, our teachers for two and three bedroom homes?
I can answer.
Go ahead, Carolyn.
Yeah, sure. So that was one of the reasons why we, uh, did an updated staff survey in twenty twenty, uh, was to get a little bit more detailed information on household sizes and also, uh, household income, because both of those really inform the unit mix and also the affordability and rent levels. And so we did get that information. And, uh, you know, it was about sixty percent of the renters that were really one, two and three bedroom households, a lot of one and two bedroom, uh, two-person households. Um, and so that's a suggested mix. It's not set in stone, but it reflects, uh, the survey data of basically who would kind of fit into, uh, studio or one bedroom versus how many folks were really, you know, three, four, five person households. It was a, you know, still thirty or forty percent of the stuff, but it was a smaller percentage. And so, um, and that could be refined with the developer, but that really reflects, um, the survey data for household size. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention is that survey also, um, looked, did look into income ranges. And so the other suggestion in our report, and we did present a, a more thorough report that you could um, look at if you wanted more details, but, um, the range of incomes is really, you know, from the forty, thirty or forty percent of the area median income up to a hundred, a hundred and twenty percent of the area median, median income. So that's kind of the range of salaries and incomes, household incomes of the BUSD staff. So, uh, also when our, in our feasibility analysis, we really looked at you know, providing, um, a mixture of rental, uh, income targeting as well as kind of unit targeting to kind of hit the range of household sizes and income ranges of the staff.
Thank you. I'm, I'm glad you, uh, said the second part about, um, targeting income of staff, um, especially just keeping in mind that our workforce, our educator workforce housing um, is for all of our educators, um, including our classified staff and not just, um, for our teachers. So that was a, that would, would have been my next question, but thank you um, so much for highlighting that.
Director Vasudev.
Hi, um, I just wanted to thank everyone for all the hard work that's gone into this. You know, as a transportation planner, I can't even imagine doing this as a side thing, Director Sinai, this is huge. And so I know this takes a lot of time and consensus building around new developments always takes a lot of time. I, um, just wanted to comment on the issue of parking and really discourage the idea of building more parking. Um, the issue of parking came before city council in January. There was a robust discussion about parking limits in our city. And the reason, uh, why you limit parking in transit-rich areas is that you're hoping to move people to more sustainable modes of transportation. And the way that you do this is twofold. One is, you know, by telling people about the modes and limiting parking. The other one is by, uh, introducing transportation demand management incentives for new developments. So things like transit passes and bike parking, right? Um, those two things have to come hand in hand, the incentives and the parking limits. And so this is a transit-rich area and I really highly discourage us to building more parking. Um, not only did council, uh, say that we should limit parking in transit-rich areas, but city staff also said that, you know, um, they released a study that fifty percent of our existing off-street parking sits empty. That means that we have too much parking in Berkeley for the, for, you know, the, the amount of people that need it. So um, I think that our recommendation should be in line with council, like we should not be building more parking. It is not sustainable to do that. However, I do think, um, that in the RFP, and I learned from our planning director, actually, that there is an exemption for this kind of housing. They don't have to introduce the new transportation demand managed, management incentives that new developments have to introduce because it is considered an affordable housing project. However, we can't ask, eh, you know, whoever ends up being the developer to maybe survey the educators who are going to live here, the population that's going to live there, and ask like, what kind of transportation demand management incentives make sense for you? Do you want transit passes? Do you need, you know, more bicycle facilities? What does, do you need more electric charging stations? You know, what, what kind of TDM incentives would push you toward sustainable means? So I just want to really discourage the amount of additional parking that's not in line with our city's climate goals. Um, and also just say that I'm really excited that there is going to be workforce housing for our educators, that it was really heartbreaking to hear that only thirty percent can afford to live here. Like, our educators need to be a fabric of our schools, of our community, and this is one step closer in that direction. So, um, you know, I'm really excited about that.
So I've got, um, Director Babbitt and, and Student Director Miller. I just want to make sure that you've got an opportunity to chime in if you want. And then just to note, it's ten thirty-eight. And we have to end at eleven unless we do an extension. This is the last item, right?
We actually have another item, the one that was pulled.
Oh, right. Okay, so maybe we could do Director Babbitt and then Director Miller, if you have anything to add, and then we can see if we can wrap up.
I mean, I would just like to answer something really quick if I can about community engagement. As a student, I often, in the, in the conversation about community engagement, I think, um, like, it's, you can't just place something in front of people and then like expect that to be it. Like, it needs to be like continuous harsh outreach. As the student director, my job has been to make student engagement with this board. And I've seen like, you can't just place something in front of people, you have to actively encourage it. And I think, um, to the turnout rates you were talking about, yes, part of it was what was going on with COVID at the time, but we heard there from our public comments today, there are people passionate about this issue. So I would attempt to try that again and move forward with that. That's all I have to say. I love what I'm seeing though with the work, um, in the slideshow. And thank you for that presentation.
Thank you. Director Babbitt.
I totally agree, Director Miller. Thank you so much. And want to just, um, ask about this survey question. How many classified staff responded to those needs around, um, you know, one unit versus two units? Do we have that breakdown of the responses between classified and teacher?
Or should we have it in the final report?
We do.
I don't have it in front of, but it's in the report.
Yeah.
Carolyn, do you remember if it was fairly?
I remember, um, in general, the classified staff tended to range on the larger family size. And the certificated staff tended to be more on the smaller household size. Not universally, but you know, it was a little bit of a shift.
So the survey results, um, those went out. Executive Director Kalis with the, with the packet, remind me?
No, no, they were part of the final report that was produced by RCD. I don't have it up in front of me.
Okay, so we'll make sure you get the, the survey, the survey data. Because it's all information that needs to continue to inform discussion.
The final report was in the agenda for the facility subcommittee, right?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, so I think we're, unless there's any last minute final questions, because we do have another item, if we could entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion, Director Sinai.
All right.
Um, I'll move to approve the staff recommendation.
All right, I'll second it. Um, so let's, um, Ms. Shari, uh, can you do the roll?
Yes, uh, Director Vasudev.
Yes.
Director Babbitt.
Yes, with the promise that we're gonna have robust community engagement going forward.
Uh, Student Director Miller.
Yes, seconding everything Director Babbitt said.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I will pass it back to President Alper.
Thank you so much, um, Director Kalis, Carolyn, Lisa, thank you so much. All right, and thank you all, to those of you who stuck around for that conversation. We have, um, one more short item and then we, and then if you would like to speak in public comment, um, in our last public comment, you're welcome to. Now would be the time to raise your hand. So we have a sense of how many people would like to. Dr. Stevens, we're doing item twelve point two, which is the approval of the job description for payroll and benefits manager. Maybe you can give like a two-minute explanation of this item and then, um, a couple board members had questions, I think.
Uh, sure, I'm happy to. And I'm also gonna invite, um, Pauline Follinsby into this discussion as well. Um, so, so payroll and benefits are two offices that reside in, uh, the sort of larger Department of Business Services. They share many related functions and have some that are separate. Um, uh, as we sort of analyze this or overall need in the two departments, this is work led by Pauline Follinsby. Um, we thought that it made more sense, um, uh, to create a higher level position, a manager position that would attract, uh, we hope through higher, both through the higher title and salary, um, uh, different qual, uh, different caliber of, um, applicant. Um, and then also felt because we were raising both the position title, the salary and there's, uh, that we could raise the responsibilities to, for overall management of the two departments. Um, that was a sort of general over idea between merging these two functions, um, under a single manager position in business services. Um, Ms. Follinsby, would you like to add anything about the sort of underlying rationale of moving in this direction to sort of merge payroll and benefits together?
Right, um, so I've been working closely with benefits, um, since, um, about January of last year. And in looking at that department and looking at a lot of the issues that came up, a lot of them had to do with, um, work that was done in benefits, not translating over to payroll. So I thought, um, it's, it's definitely, there are related functions. Um, there is a lot of overlap and there would definitely be, um, an advantage to having one person being aware of both, or being leading both departments. Um, since the information that's keyed into, um, a person's benefit screen of, um, impacts their net pay. So, um, just in terms of the, uh, a practical approach, um, to attempt to increase efficiencies um, and, um, reduce errors, um, I think it would be definitely advisable to have one person oversee both departments.
Are, are there questions that board members had?
Yeah, I raised my hand.
Oh, yes. Oh, I didn't see that, sorry.
So in the, um, in the public comments, uh, by BCC E, they use the term risk manager and they were talking as if this now becomes a risk management's position. And so can you clarify the, the use of terms and how it overlaps or doesn't overlap?
So, um, so the risk manager was actually a position that was, um, I think that was implemented about ten years ago. Um, and that was to manage the district's risk. So the district's risk has to do with insurance and legal issues, uh, where self-insured for workers comp. So as a result, we needed someone to closely monitor our workers comp and our mon, and monitor claims related to workers comp. And because that was a part-time position, it was felt at the time that that position could also oversee benefits. But what ended up happening was the risk manager, um, actually spent more time um, getting benefits, um, supervising benefits and not as much, uh, um, risk management. As a result, um, part of the budget reductions that we had for twenty twenty-one fiscal year was the elimination of the risk management position. Um, most districts our size, we don't have a dedicated risk manager. That's usually handled by another, um, senior management, um, person, usually the CBO, because it's business-related, as well as our insurance carriers and their legal department. So that's what we've actually been doing since, um, January. And, um, we've actually been very responsive and, um, working closer with our providers um, for workers comp as well as our general liability. So, um, with that in mind, um, the supervision of benefits, we also hired a lead benefits um, um, analyst or, um, specialist. Um, and we also hired, uh, uh, benefit, another benefit specialist. So we've recruited four support positions, um, in the benefits department, uh, with the lead, um, position taking on more of the responsibility in terms of understanding, you know, the ins and outs of processing benefits, communicating to our employees. Um, and, and we see the manager's role as one that would ensure that the interaction between benefits and payroll would be seamless.
Vice President Brown.
Uh, yeah, thank you so much, um, for that expla, explanation, um. Uh, Associate Superintendent Follinsby, I think I have a, a couple of questions or a little bit of concern. So when I look at the job description, I see that there are eighteen bullet points of, uh, job duties. And I think that when I, when I, and also in my research of other school districts who are, um, similar, uh, whose sizes are similar to ours, um, the two are completely separate, um, job entities. And so, um, given our already, um, given, not to air our laundry, but given our challenges that we already have um, with ensuring that our, uh, payroll happens accurately for every single one of our employees, would it be in the best, uh, interest of our district to, um, to create this position that, um, has so many different job responsibilities?
Well, um, in most districts, um, the benefits department reports to, um, it's, it's an HR function. Um, in our district, it was like a standalone function. Um, it belongs either in HR or with payroll because, um, all departments are so closely intertwined. So, um, yes, we've had problems in payroll, but a lot of those problems, um, payroll is, is the end result of accumulation of problems. So if the person is set up incorrectly in HR or there's an issue in benefits, then that person is going to be paid incorrectly. Um, we've actually, um, our, our fiscal director has been, um, working in payroll with backfilling her position. And we're taking more of a, um, structured approach to our issues and, um, underlying, um, challenges that we have. And a lot of what we have found is that, um, if our benefits department is not working closely with payroll, it leads to further problems. So, um, I think by shoring up our benefits department with, um, with, um, a lead benefits person that will take on more of the operational side of the benefits department and having that person report to the payroll slash benefits manager, who would then ensure that the, um, the interconnectivity would be there, I think it would be better for the district. And this is having, having been in benefits for a year and having, um, run payroll since January and actually a month when our payroll supervisor was out on medical leave.
Dr. Stevens, do you have anything to add?
Uh, not much, except that the rationale that Assistant Superintendent Follinsby is laying out is one that she brought to me about two months ago. Um, I know that she's been thinking in great detail about how to improve service for our employees. I know that she's been thinking in great detail about how to improve service for our employees in both of these departments. And I think her sort of analysis of the interconnectedness of the two functions, and the benefit of having a single person take care of both of those functions, made a lot of sense. I think you're probably hearing that that makes sense this evening. And so I was compelled enough that we went through the PC process, you know, we wrote a new job description, had it approved, and now are bringing it here for the board as well. But, but in general, I'm supportive of the move and ask that the board move forward and approve this job description.
When you say PC, you mean personnel commission?
I do, yes.
Is there any other comments or questions that people have? No? Okay. Well, I'm not sure everybody is, but I'll make the motion to approve the staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Ms. Charis.
Director Vasilev.
I'm gonna say no, it feels too much for one.
Can you repeat that, please?
No.
Okay. Director Babbitt.
No.
Director Miller.
I'm gonna say no, too.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
No.
President Alper.
Yes. And so the motion does not pass. So, Dr. Stevens, if you want to bring, think about it more, bring it back to us, you know, at a later date, in some form, other form, or the same form, after talking to us more, obviously, you're welcome to.
Yeah, we'll regroup and then sort of rethink this particular position.
Okay. Okay, appreciate it.
Just add a quick follow-up comment. This is part of why going over the organizational chart is so important, and something that I've been talking about a lot, and how we can really understand each role, each responsibilities, and how we ensure that we have the right accountability measures in place. So it would be very helpful if we could move that up on our planning timeline for completing this work as a board.
Thank you, Director Babbitt. All right, I'm gonna move to extend the meeting to, if you want to speak in public comment, please raise your hand right now. Okay, I'm gonna, Lay Levy is gonna be the last speaker. I'm gonna move to, just doing the math in my head for eight, I'm gonna move to extend the meeting to 11:09. Is there a second? Someone please quickly second that.
I'll second it.
All right, Ms. Charis, can you quickly call the role, please?
Director Sasilev.
Yes.
Director Babbitt.
Yes.
Director Miller.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
And President Alper.
Yes. All right. We're gonna have one minute each for public comment. Thank you so much to all of you who have stuck around till the end of our meeting. We do want to hear from you. So, Vice President Brown, if you could give everybody one minute. Neela Rosen, you're first, followed by Dan Smith, and then Katie Love. Rosen, Liz.
I am unable to allow them to speak. Superintendent, do you have that ability?
Let me give that a try.
And if everyone could please make sure to keep their comments to one minute, that would be great. Thank you. All right, Ms. Rosen, you're up.
Okay, great. Thank you for being so gracious with your, your extra. I'll try to put here. I just wanted to kind of come back to the centrality of our, of our students and to kind of ask for a few things. One is to really, in the next phase, take a get-to-yes approach. I, I think a lot of the approach has been just a lot of ruminations on the complexity, but I'd like us to flip the switch a little and, and start with the assume five days a week of instruction, and how are we gonna get there and build out those different models and present them? I can see a lot of different ways, things I haven't heard yet from, about plotting in high school, about simultaneous teaching and Zoom in the classroom, if that's what's needed. It's not ideal, but might be needed. And I, I want to just reiterate, to create more trust in, and transparency in the process as we go. I also want to encourage needs assessments rather than assumptions, especially for middle school and high school students themselves. Ask them what their needs are, and get students involved in designing these surveys. And the last thing I wanted to-
I need to cut you off. We only go to 11:00. Thank you so much. Dan Smith, and we cannot go past 11:09, so if we could, everybody keep it to a minute. Mr. Smith, you're up.
Hello, thank you. Yes, I'm one of the owners of the commercial building across Virginia. We have about 15 units of artist housing and apartments and stores. I'll be, just a few points. I think workforce housing is a totally worthy program. A concern, we really like the idea of you being explicit about having the entry off San Pablo. And ideally, that's not just for the parking, but for the apartments and for the school, having an entry off San Pablo. Secondly, a six-story building right on the edge of Virginia Street is gonna block out our winter sun. So I would suggest the top two stores, two stories which are above the four-story zoning base, be stepped back, like the Jones Building did. The last is parking. If you could get closer to the base zoning requirement of one per apartment, it would ease the problem. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and thank you for your engagement as we go forward with this. Katie Love, followed by Nate Johnson. Katie Love.
Hey there. Sorry, I was muted. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, we made it this far. Okay, I am a parent, a Washington parent, and I want to first really support the teacher housing project. We all know how urgently this housing, affordable housing is needed, so really support you on that. I appreciate the agreement that's been reached, and it is an important milestone, and I thank you all for getting us here. And I cannot help but mourn and grieve for all of the months that have been lost and for all of the impacts on our city's children. We know that they'll never get this year, or are we talking about years here back? And so much trust has been broken along the way. So we're approaching the one-year anniversary of our public schools being closed, and a return to a two-day-a-week model is not enough. So Superintendent Stevens, I really encourage you, as you said, to get creative with our space. Please, as parents have been begging, let's use the outdoor space we have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Next, we have Nate Johnson, followed by Abigail Starkey. Mr. Johnson. Nate? Nate? All right, let's move to Abigail Starkey. We'll come back to Nate. Ms. Starkey.
Hi, I, I really wanna just show my appreciation for all the amazing work that has been done thus far, but as many others before me have said, I feel that two days a week in school is just not enough. And I feel we should really strive for the five days a week this year, if not for like the end of the year, or even a few months into next year. I just feel that this is a very important issue that needs to be resolved.
Thank you so much. Joyce, well, Nate Johnson, are you still with us? Oh, okay. Joyce Barrison.
Oh, gosh, I'm here. I just got to. Oh, gosh. Well, I'll tell you guys, I'm really, I feel really sad. I feel really disappointed. There was a loss that I heard tonight that I didn't think was quite accurate. And I know that, you know, Anna said this thing about transportation, but, you know, I, I just, I just ask you to look at yourselves and your situation. I mean, here you are in these gorgeous offices in West Campus. You've got a huge parking lot, which I understand you just spent a whole lot of money kind of redoing. You know, and you're gonna, and you're gonna, it's like, I, I can't imagine any one of you would wanna live in a 110-unit building on San Pablo Avenue that didn't have enough, that had 50 parking spaces for tenants. I, I just, and that there was a garage with like all these students going in and out all day. I can't imagine that one of you would find that desirable, and why you would want to do that for your employees, I have no idea. I really don't. It makes me so sad.
I'm sorry. But, but I really appreciate you sticking around and providing comment to us. Thank you. Building, okay, no, we already have, building in construction trades.
Good evening, Superintendent Stevens, President Alper, thanks for letting me come on tonight. Along Secretary Treasurer Clouver and the Alameda County Building Construction Trades, we'd like to congratulate you on selecting the Berkeley Adult School for, for parking, excuse me, for our fellow brothers and sisters at Berkeley Unified. We look forward to working with you on making sure that this project is built with a strong project labor agreement, that is built with the hardest-working and best-trained construction workers in the country. Our successful partnership that we already have with the previous bond shows that we can, what we can do when we work together. Please let us know we can help in the developing language for this project, or any project this may have planned for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Heather Chacon, followed by Nancy Saban.
Hi, thanks for sticking around, everybody, and thank you for Director Babbitt and Director Miller for your comments about community engagement, the need for that at the Berkeley Adult School. I live a block away, and I have not heard anything about this until some of my neighbors told me about it. So really, we can and should do better there. A couple points. The, I think the most important one I want to make, since I don't, I probably won't have the time to get to all my thoughts, is this is gonna set the tone for other projects, especially projects using measurable funding and trying to address this very important and urgent need. There is a high need for workforce housing, but it's about quality, not just quantity. And so I think, you know, if people, especially neighborhood members and community members, taxpayers are not happy with how this pans out, you know, it's gonna put, it's gonna make it really hard to do projects like this in the future, and I think it's a really important need. So we need to do it right. And looking forward to engaging with everybody as promised on this as it continues forward.
Thank you so much. Nancy Saban, NS.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. So I would want to add, you know, my stance on this, but going forward, I want to add that you keep talking about no entrance or exit on, on Virginia, the same for Francisco Street. So please include Francisco Street when you keep talking about Virginia, the entrances and exits for both Berkeley Adult School and the tenants would have to be off of San Pablo to make any sane living. And I also just, you look at your average family of two or four, and none of them own half of a car. So for you to be assuming that everybody's gonna be, you know, all be taking public transportation in the pouring rain and let go of both of, you know, one and a half of their cars, I just, you know, it's nice thinking, but it's, I, I, I just don't think it's gonna happen. And they're gonna end up, you know, gonna end up on, on the streets. And then you haven't mentioned at all today, retail, all the retail, and where they're gonna park.
Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate it. Okay. Sarah Bowles, followed by Jacqueline Erby, Jody Revelle, and then Lay Levy will be our last speaker, unless Nate Johnson's still with us. Go ahead, Sarah.
Hey, so I'm sure you're aware by now that a group of Berkeley parents organized our own survey of the USD families. So it's been word of mouth. We've got 1,100 kids in the district so far represented. And we looked at the whole family impact of distance learning. So just a heads up, the burden on families is substantial. None of those burdens are gonna get solved with just a dozen days back at school, and you're asking too much of families for too long. Like, you really need to open schools five days a week if you want to take the burden off thousands of families in this district. So I'd encourage you to reach out to us if you want that whole family impact you, because it's definitely going to inform how you deal with trauma in the district. So, yeah, happy to tell you more, and we're gonna publish next week.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Jacqueline Erby, you're next.
Hi, I'm just calling, I live three blocks from the Berkeley Adult School, and just wanted to call, I just wanted to say that I support workforce housing at that location. I think it's great to put a large volume of housing. We need more affordable housing in our community. People who tend to live in affordable housing tend to have fewer cars, and that's really important to be aware of. Also, parking is very expensive to build, so the more parking you build, the less housing you can build. And I find it very hard to believe that you didn't get a lot of community engagement for a housing, a housing project in the city of Berkeley. I encourage you to reach out to the local council member, Kesarwani, because this community is very engaged in housing, and there are people on both sides of it. So very, very supportive of having new neighbors in our neighborhood. Also, kids back to school five days a week could be excellent. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Jody Revelle.
I'm here. Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, great. Well, thanks for hanging in there. I am also a neighbor on Francisco Street near the adult school, and I just wanted to say that no one is against housing teachers. There's no need to show us the statistics. We all believe it. No one's against affordable housing. We all believe in it. But let's be honest, no one wants a high-rise building built right next to them. No one wants cars roaming round and round around on the street, or their sunlight blocked, or construction going on for years and years right next to them. Nobody wants it. You don't want it. We don't want it. Okay, so this is also in the context of the North Berkeley Bart Station also being developed, which is hundreds, if not thousands, of units, okay, on the opposite side. So this is really about equitable distribution of the, of the burden and the opportunity of development in our city. So I'm just encouraging you and hoping that you'll work with the city in Bart and start to think about the bigger picture of how these pieces connect. All these streets connect, cars are roaming, kids are out playing, et cetera. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Levy, and then if Nate Johnson is still here, he will be our last speaker. Ms. Levy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, you're good.
Hi, thank you very much, everybody. You know, we're here, it's another meeting, it's really late, and we're all exhausted. We should be talking about school reopenings, and I understand that it seems that teacher housing is much more important to President Ty Alper and Director Sinai. And it seems clear that that was really a priority, as enthusiastic as you were on your commentary on the presentation. I really wish you would take that much care into school reopenings. We're in crisis mode. It's been almost a year that our public schools have been closed, when private schools in Berkeley have been open. Why are we not having emergency meetings every week to discuss opening our schools right away now for five days a week? I understand you are really proud of the agreement that you made, but the agreement was really basically capitulating to union demands, which I agree, we love our teachers, we want them to be safe. But the fact is, is you gave into everything they wanted, and the teachers and, you know, the students and the parents have really suffered in this. And we really ask Ty Alpert, as president, we need your leadership in this, and if we don't see it, we will remember it on our next voting day. So we hope that you will start fighting for our kids, because our kids cannot wait, just like Laura Babbitt has said.
Thank you so much. Nate Johnson, are you still with us? Nate?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you for coming back to me. I'm, I'm a parent of a middle school kid at Longfellow, and I'm a graduate of Berkeley Public Schools and Berkeley High School myself. Cut to the chase, my, my question sort of comment is about the physical distancing aspect of getting kids back to school, hopefully five days a week in the near future. But have, to what extent have you evaluated alternative buildings? I mean, Dr. Stevens touched on this earlier just briefly, but
There's, there's some large buildings like the, the auditorium cafeteria, you know, Donahue Gymnasium at Berkeley High. That it just seems to me could be, really could, could be utilized as classroom space. And I'd just like to hear, obviously not right now, but I'd like to hear you guys come, present some plans. With some specificity about how those structures might be used and if they can't be used specifically, why not? So that's, that's my main comment, but thank you.
No, thank you. And thanks for sticking around. We appreciate it. All right, everybody. That concludes our meeting. Thank you so much and have a good night. We're adjourned.